So I see by the clock on the wall, it's six o'clock. And we have quorum. For for those who are wondering why I'm opening the meeting, our mayor, Kevin Murdock, will be a little bit late. He has a very important engagement, opening up for, I believe, Bayes United, if I understand correctly, yes. So we're here for the Budget Estimates Committee meeting. And we begin our meetings as usual by acknowledging the lands on which we gather is the traditional territory of the Coast and Strait Salishis people. Specifically, we recognize the Lakongan-speaking people known today as the Songies and Squamot nations, and that their historic connections to these lands continue to this day. I wanted to remind everyone that reminder that video recordings of municipal meetings are streamed live and are archived on the municipal website. Is there any, oh, I know the one announcement I'm supposed to share with everyone is that a reminder that tomorrow from 1:30, the municipal hall will be closed, as most will be heading over to the two o'clock memorial service for former mayor Nils Jensen. And I hope to see all of you there. Are there any other announcements that I've forgotten at this moment? I just wanted to share regrets from Councilor Braithwaite, who is not feeling well today. Great, so if all goes well, the mayor will be here shortly. In the meanwhile, I think we move to item, agenda item number one, the Draft 2019-2023 Financial Plan. And at this point, I will throw over to, or release to, our C A O, Lou Verella. Thank you.
Thank you, your worship. So we do have copies of the financial plan on your desk before you for ease of use. We also have copies available for the public, as well as the reports, because those were late in coming out. So we do have paper copies for anyone who who needs one. I think quite quickly, we will just move into the departmental reviews. So so really, that's the purpose of tonight. Using the draft financial plan 2019 to 2023, we're going to walk through the departmental overviews again, as another step in aligning strategic priorities with financial planning. And I'm going to hand the mic over to Warren Jones right now, because he did provide a summary report, thanks Deb, that goes along with the larger documents. So over to you, Warren.
Thank you. I will be brief. I think it's important to let council and the public know, and I don't want to sugarcoat this, we need to start spending more money on infrastructure. And what is being proposed in this budget is an increase for the average house of about $23 a month, but that will depend on the value of your home and that type of thing. And there are a couple of primary cost drivers for that. The first of about 2.7% is contractual increases, so those are wages for our fire, police, and municipal staff, and things like gas, electricity, et cetera. But the the remainder is largely for infrastructure, and council has spent a great deal of time talking about that. So this won't be, I don't think, a new thing for council or the public. So a couple of the things, council has said we would like to consider increasing our contributions to our infrastructure reserves by 2% per year, and our increase, we would like to increase paving by 1% per year. So those are very significant costs, or sorry, those are fairly big increases, but we have very significant gaps between the costs required to maintain and replace our infrastructure and the money that we're putting away. So this budget really is about contractual increases and increasing costs to infrastructure. So the plan tonight is to have briefly, because we've done this a couple of times now, to have staff go through and talk about their initiatives in their departments, and then get council feedback. And I'm an eternal optimist, so I'm hoping that we may be in a position at the end of the night to say, go away, staff, prepare a budget based on this. If we're not, though, we have more time, and council can take as much time as needed. But we do have some legislative requirements, so we do have another day next week. The one thing that I want to point out that we were doing a bit differently this year is around grants. So at times, we have said, let's bring all the grants forward, have people come forward, build those into the budget. What staff are proposing is to actually set the the limit on the grants at the same level as last year, and then, so we have an amount of money that you've decided upon, that we will include in the budget, and then next week, have council consider the grants within that amount of money. So that's the plan. Of course, council has, can change any of these things. So what I guess I would propose is that we move in and talk about our various departmental plans.
Okay.
So Deb.
Am I starting?
Excellent.
So it's up to, have we got excited? Hands going up, who wants to go first, Corporate Services or Finance? Over to Corporate Services, Deb Hopkins.
Opening the show. So these are the projects that we presented earlier on February 23rd, so let's quickly go through some of those again. So one of the first requests that we have is for committee room meeting, sorry, the committee meeting room and lobby viewing connectivity and viewing display unit. So we're looking to leverage on the existing technologies and amenities to provide some additional meeting space in our committee meeting room here, because at the moment we don't have Wi-Fi and a display unit in there, so it's making that meeting space a little bit difficult when we're trying to use it for presentations.
I apologize to, sorry to interrupt. What page are we on?
So this is on page 36 and 37 in the draft financial plan.
Thank you very much, thank you.
So we're also looking to connect the viewing screen that we have currently in the lobby to be able to provide the ability to see the proceedings of council, should there be meetings where there are an overflow of people, so that they can hear and see what's happening in the council meeting. That was, the next one we have is for website support, so what we're looking to do is increase our monthly support that's provided by contract for for web. So that is a request to increase the existing operational budget to allow more service requests each month. So that will allow us to leverage on currently available functionality that we may not have already incorporated, and just to put in some more service requests and optimize the existing capabilities. I wanted to point out that we had originally requested some funds for a website upgrade in 2019, but we've deferred that to 2020. We know that this is a key piece that we need to address, however, we need, when we reviewed what we had on our plates, we didn't know for certain that this is something we could complete, so we wanted to defer this and actually spend the time to to get it done right, rather than jumping into it and trying to rush the job. We've also got a request for records management, and this is, this is an integral component of our daily operations. We need this to update our current practices, so that we're incorporating the best practices. We're improving our business processes and ensuring that our legal requirements are met. This is a multi-year undertaking, but we'd like to start this in 2019. This is, there's a fair amount of risk that is associated with this, so we'd like to mitigate that and look to decrease the staff time and improve our efficiencies in this area. We've also got a request for public engagement and communication. So this is requesting resources to implement engagement strategies that support our organizational priorities and objectives. We are looking to explore the implementation of recommendations made previously by the mayor's task force on public engagement, and this is going to help us to foster that service excellence that we've been discussing through the development of these engagement strategies. And we have a request for the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act and media training, and this is to develop a common understanding of legislative requirements and personal accountability in the area of of freedom of information. We are looking to create a shared framework for managing and utilizing available communication platforms and strategies, and we're looking to mitigate our risks, avoid legal action, make sure that we're in compliance with those acts, and that we are creating a shared framework for for media training. So this would be training for senior staff and the elected officials. And then we also have a request for staff training, which I will hand over to our chief administrative officer.
Thanks, Deb. So Bonnie is also away this evening, so I think it's something that's definitely roaring through the town. Human Resources is proposing a strategic initiative to create a centralized staff training and development budget at an amount of 30,000 per year, and we'd like to include this as a core item in the budget. This will be managed by Human Resources and would include broader district-wide staff training and develop initiatives. Bonnie has plans this year to include training in respectful workplace, customer service, and management and leadership development. This would be separate from the department-specific training budgets that would be managed by the directors themselves. Staff sees the investment in staff training and development as being integral to the success of the corporation in achieving its strategic priorities, specifically in the area of providing service excellence. And this will help to ensure sustainability in quality programs and services that we provide. In addition, it does make us more competitive in the job market. We know that it's a challenge to attract and retrain and retain good people, and we see this as a key component of that. And I'll hand that over to Finance now.
Thank you, Lou. So going back up to the top of the list, the first item there is the Long-Term Financial Sustainability Plan. This plan would provide the tools and decision-making framework required to improve and achieve financial sustainability in the long term. And it should identify current and future sustainable resource requirements that would allow the organization to achieve its strategic goals. By integrating the Long-Term Financial Sustainability Plan with overall strategic objectives, the municipality can create a roadmap and provide direction for council and administration to follow in consideration of financial decisions going forward. The next item is the budgeting software. So staff is proposing to purchase the software to make the budgeting process less Excel-focused and more centralized through a single-source database, which interfaces with the district's financial software. And the software would allow the district to shift from data collection and focus on what's important, which is deeper analysis and data-driven decision-making. Right now, we have a very manual process, and there's repetitive functions throughout, so there'd be great efficiencies here as well. The payroll software upgrade, I'll leave that for now, because that isn't until 2020, but we will be looking at that and discussing it further next year. The procurement review, with a one-time operational increase, staff proposes to engage a consultant who can review our current purchasing practices and recommend sustainable procurement best practices, update the procurement policy, and provide standard contracts and templates across the district. We have very limited resources in in this area, and so if we can standardize some of that, it would save a lot. The next one is the network switch replacement. So network switches are key components of many business IT networks, as they connect multiple computers, printers, access points, phone system, light servers, and other hardware. Switches allow staff to send and receive information and access shared resources in a smooth, efficient, and highly secure manner. The current switches have failed multiple times in recent years and are in need of The next one is the Tempest web service and web application upgrade. So our current front-end software, Tempest, is upgrading their platform to the .net environment, resulting in an improved graphic interface. In 2018, the district successfully upgraded the front end of the software, and now the district is required to convert the online portion of the software, where citizens view their utility bills, property taxes, business licenses, dog licenses, and municipal ticket infractions. So that's an extension of work that we've already done. And the Microsoft 365 software upgrade, as computers are replaced throughout the district, we purchased the current version of Microsoft Office products at the same time of installation, which results in many different versions of Microsoft Office throughout the organization. The various versions are several years old, and as such, security is is at risk on those, so we need to upgrade there. And I think that's the end of my list. Over to the next person.
Okay, so we'll hand this over to Building and Planning Department, and this will be page 40 in the draft financial plan.
Your worship, members of council. What I would like to start with, if I may, is just a brief description of of the department and the function, to perhaps put the one initiative proposed for 2019 into that context. So one thing I did want to say is that the department does provide services in the areas of planning, long-range and current, as well as subdivision, also building approvals, permits, and inspections, bylaw enforcement, and business licensing. And as part of that that function, we sort of look into services around policies and programs, applications, the range from community plan amendments through to building permits. We also provide information services, both to the public and also to manage information and application files within the department. We're involved in the update and maintenance of a range of bylaws associated with the work that we do in the department, constantly looking at processes and procedures associated with our side of the business, and providing support to to various committees, the Design Panel, the Board of Variants, Heritage Committee, and the Advisory Planning Commission. So with that context, we have reviewed a 2019 initiative, which is around the area of basically a policy program service in the department, and that includes what's been considered as a housing needs report. And council may recall, they had provided initial approval for the budget allocation toward that as part of our discussion at a previous meeting. The context for that housing needs report as an initiative for 2019 is that we are continuing to also work on the secondary suite study, which was commenced later in 2018. We're also coordinating with the Capital Regional District to look at a sea-level rise study, with some funding from the federal government anticipated. We're continuing to work and bring forward policies around community amenity contributions as as one of the initiatives that are ongoing, working on the energy step code and moving through the various steps and processes associated with that, in terms of energy-efficient building. And we're also working on the Prospect Heritage Conservation Area. So just to give you the context for the one 2019 project, which is, again, the housing needs report. I think with that, I'll pass it to the next person.
Just before we go on to the next person, I wanted to ask for councilors and and the public to save your questions at the end of this item, then I'm sure we can come back and and start asking all of our many, many questions that are already piling up. Thank you.
And for your information, your worship, Deb is just compiling the summary sheet, so you'll have a complete list of projects, just to make it easier for you to go through after the individual department presentations. With that, we'll hand it over to Engineering and Public Works Department, which is on pages 41 through 42 in the draft financial plan.
Thank you very much. The Engineering Services Department's made up of the engineering team and the Public Works Team, engineering team, some engineers and engineering technicians, and the Public Works Team made up of technicians, maintenance crews, and support staff, providing services to the district of, that's laid out as follows. Delivering clean water to residents and businesses and institutions in Oak Bay. Collect and remove wastewater, so that's stormwater and sanitary sewage. Solid waste collection. Maintain, develop, and renew a transportation system that moves people, specifically pedestrians, cyclists, human self-propelled vehicles, and vehicles and mass transit. And finally, support the district's work with respect to land use management and planning. So the departments are priorities for 2019. First of all, is to meet our level of service targets with respect to our daily operations and maintenance of infrastructure, so sewers, water systems, sidewalks, traffic and transportation systems, and finally, streetlights and traffic signals. Next is to deliver on our 2019 asset management program tasks, which is about building capacity and capabilities to deliver on our infrastructure renewal challenges in the coming years. So the budget in front of you at this time, with respect to this department, reflects the strategic goals of achieving sustainable service delivery through an asset management program, integrated with a long-term financial plan. So in specifics, in terms of the tasks for this year, the first one is, our intention is to, so based on the table above, I would actually just follow along in the in the financial plan first, and we'll talk about the table after. First is to increase the pace of the sanitary sewer condition assessment program. So we've already completed three years of a five-year program, so the plan for this year is to accelerate that, so that we can complete that as condition assessment program and enable us to do a sewer master plan, an asset management plan for sewer in 2020. The next one is to to realize further electricity savings in the district by completing our final phase of the LED streetlight upgrade project, essentially cut our costs for electricity for streetlights by two-thirds. And finally, there's a number of tasks there that are captured here, which are without a distinct district facilities management function within the district. We've added a number of health and safety and security upgrades related to municipal in this portion of the plan. The final note I wanted to make, just about this year's budget proposal for Engineering Services, is that the five-year plan also includes yearly increases in the amount of road rehabilitation, storm sewer, sanitary sewer, and water distribution rehabilitation. So the budget represents, this year's budget represents the first step in that path to bridging the annual gap in terms of infrastructure funding. Thank you very much.
If we could just have a few seconds while we change the chair.
Thank you, Councilor Zelka, for being an effective acting mayor in my absence. Much appreciated. I see we're at Engineering right now. Can I hand it back to Mr. Jones and Miss Verella to hand it off to the next staff overview? Or are we doing questions after each one?
Thank you, your worship. So we're just letting the departments walk through their presentations.
Perfect, thank you.
Saving questions to the end, which is also handy when you could attend. And Deb, I just announced Deb's just putting together a compilation of all of these sheets, so I think it'll be easier for council to work through the projects. So she's just photocopying those right now. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Darren for the Fire Department, and this will be page 44 in the draft financial plan.
Thank you, Lou, your worship. Thank you for showing up for my presentation.
I had to make it for fire, absolutely.
Good, and good evening to the rest of the members of council. The mission of the Oak Bay Fire Department is to provide exceptional fire protection and public safety services to present the, prevent the loss of life and property through emphasizing prevention, intervention, and emergency preplanning to ensure the protection of life property and the environment, delivering prompt and effective fire prevention, emergency preparedness, and interventions services, delivering fire and emergency management services that are community-based, by ensuring that our programs and priorities align with the needs of the residents and businesses in the district of Oak Bay, taking an integrated, systematic approach to emergency and public safety issues and services, and providing support to both team members and victims after trauma and crisis. Now, I'll draw your attention to our 2019 initiatives. I'll begin with the Fire Hall Bay Door Alteration. Currently, one of our fire apparatus bays is still the original 1938 size in both height and width. Currently, no apparatus manufacturer designs a piece of, a fire engine, essentially, that will fit into that that bay. We do have one other bay that's been raised and widened that currently contains our aerial ladder truck. However, this this bay to replace our our oldest engine that is in need of replacement in 2020 needs needs to be enlarged. The money requested includes making sure that the wooden door, the slightly larger and higher and wider door, will match the rest of the structure, as well as, I have consulted with with building and planning, with preliminary discussions just regarding the heritage register, and to ensure that any work that's done there will reflect the visual symmetry going forward. We have the exterior painting of the fire station and storage shed. The exterior hasn't been painted for over 10 years. The wood substrates underneath are showing quite a bit of wear, and of course, sun, rain, moisture damage, and the damages is accelerating, as many of the underlying substrates are are exposed to the elements. We have requested funds to perform this work over the past couple of years, but other other priorities have been have been put in place. That completes my report.
Thank you, chief. Am I managing this from person to person? I'll hand it back to Lou again. We're just waiting for Deb to, oh.
Thank you, your worship.
Ms. Hopkins to get back.
The photocopier never works when you need it to. I'll just ask staff to circulate that around the council table, and then, Mr. Jones, if you want to walk people through perhaps the matrix or your plan for this portion of the meeting.
Your worship, so I think council is aware that we've been now talking about this on a few occasions, and the budget. What council asked us to do was put everything into the budget, all of the the projects, initiatives, and priorities, and that's what we've done. And as you, those documents that you have actually list all of those. So where that ends up at the end of the day, as I as I started out, is a 8.4% increase. It's up to council how you might want to work through this, if there are, if you want to go through each project, if there are other things. I guess at the end of the day, what we would like is a direction to to go ahead and prepare the actual financial plan bylaws, and if we're not able to do all that tonight, or if you need more information, we can bring that back next week. But as council requested, in the draft financial plan, all of the the projects are included. And it's up to you what, as staff, we went through all of these. Because one of the things we wanted to make sure, if that you said, yes, we're going to give you the money to do those, that we could actually do them. And so we've gone through that process. And I think, Ms. Hopkins, one of the things that we actually said, you know, in our department, we've got too many things on the go. And we are suggesting putting off until 2020, the, kind of the major change to the website to allow us to focus on other priorities. But all of these other initiatives are things that we can do. Again, I'll remind you that two-point-seven percent of the increases is really, it's really around wages and contractual costs. And things like hydro and gas. The other ones that council has directed that we put in are the two percent to assist with infrastructure. So that's an increase to the infrastructure reserve. A one percent increase for roads. And the other increases are almost entirely related to infrastructure. So the, this plan really is focused on infrastructure. That's the message we've heard loud and clear from council. But if there are things that you would like to change, if there's phasing, timing, things you want to add or delete, now would be a good time to do it. So you have got in front of you, just distribute, those are the exact same projects that have been listed in the document, the financial plan that you've had before. But we've just kind of put them into a way that hopefully is a little bit easier for you to look at. So it's, what we're really looking for now is just direction from council as to how you would like us to proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. There's a couple of things I just need to ask, questions on this document. I want to, I have a printed front page, a blank second page, and then I have printing on both sides after that. I just want to make sure that the total number of pages we should be looking at is four. Is that correct? Didn't just misprint? If you have the original there, just want to make sure. Do you want me just to read out what we've got up here, just to make, okay? So four pages total?
Thanks, your worship. There was just a carryover, so I was trying to wrap my head around why we had an extra page. It's just the way it printed out.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's fine. Just making sure that we don't go through two hours of work and then realize that we've missed something. Patterson, in the back, that we've managed to magically save $200,000 and don't know why. We missed a page. Okay, and the other point thing, I would just, I think it's a very helpful tool, is the sheet that you have with the, that sort of the very high-level breakdown of things. Because I think, really, if I'm looking at that list, we have contractual, as you pointed out, is just kind of there. The infrastructure reserves, and really, what we're looking at here for people at home and here is, there's what we call other strategic capital. So it's capital projects that are essentially reserves of other types. So there are infrastructure of other types. So whether it's a fire door or some other aspect of different departments, we're trying to raise the capabilities of a department's needs. So I'll start with Councilor Zelka.
Thank you very much, Chair. It's more of a question around process. Before we get started, I see that next April, next Wednesday, April seventeenth, is another meeting relating to financial plan estimates meetings. So, but I also heard staff imply that we should make a final decision so that they can start the generation of the bylaw. Could staff, maybe through you, help me to reconcile those two apparently diametrically opposed?
Do you want me to take a cut out, or do you want to do it, Mr. Jones?
Well, I'll take the first cut, and then you can correct me when I make mistakes.
Better this way than that way, yeah.
So the hope is that we can get through a lot of this tonight. We're not going to finish, if we don't finish, though, we've got another day next week. But the other thing that we need to do next week is talk about the grants. So the idea today is to say, okay, we're okay with the level of a grant, which is roughly $212,000. And then next week, you could, which is the same as last year, next week you would go through those and say, we want to give this much for this particular project or not. However, if council needs more time to talk about these projects or other things, then next week, we will absolutely make time to do that.
Council Green? I don't have any questions. That was my understanding as well. We'll get through this if we can, and if we can't, we'll carry on next week.
Thank you, Mayor. Just through you, a question on grants, Mr. Jones. How many municipalities still have grants? Are we in the minority on grant funding or not?
I would say almost all still have grants.
Okay, thank you.
They vary significantly, though, from place to place.
Do they vary in terms of amount and how they're administered, then?
I wouldn't necessarily say how they're administered, but the amount can vary significantly.
Thank you.
I would concur with that. I've seen, and different places count as grants, a lot of things that we don't, and vice versa. So you'll see, like, a very high percentage of the budget some places as grants, but they roll a lot of operational pieces into that, so. Yes, Councilor Zelka?
One more question, then, about process. So is it intended, then, for next Wednesday, where we would review all of those many items that we have referred to the priority setting sessions for possible allocation of funds? Are we treating them like a grant, or I just wanted to know when they will be dealt with? Because I don't see them on this list, all of those many items that we have referred over, not just last year, but also the year before that, and the year before that.
Your worship, staff have tried to capture all of those things. And if we haven't, then council could, should certainly tell us that we need to include something. That was, our attempt was to include everything that council asked us to put into the budget.
Mr. Jones, maybe we can figure this out maybe between this meeting and next. This is one of the joys of having two meetings. There may be a way just of capturing what's, of what was brought up there and previous pieces, and where those reflect, are reflected in our project list. So if there's something that isn't there, or maybe was sitting in holding pattern and therefore not included, it can get flagged at that point. Okay. So procedurally, my preference to this frankly is just to go reasonably quickly through this list, ask questions. And this is this list with all of the projects. Ask questions and maybe consider some ways of mitigating the impact of some or all of these projects. But where people feel comfortable, we'll essentially put a tentative check or an X or a change and go through that. Is there any other suggestions in terms of process here? Council Patterson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I think the difficulty with this budget is to actually be making informed decisions year-over-years. And this doesn't give us year-over-years. So I'm not, I would doubt that I will give any opinion on these until I'm able to compare them with previous years and get them into categories that are consistent, so that I can see the patterns. And there's also, this is a significant amount of capital work. And so I think we, you know, in order to have this discussion, we also need to have a discussion on the reserve funds, the investment funds, the borrowing capacity, the risks, the critical systems, core systems, and whether it's expensed or amortized. Because we have to know what we're doing today, but how it affects tomorrow also. So we're working blind right now with this, because we don't, we don't have those pieces. An example is, on a lot of these things, I would like to know if they, we have, we have financial statements that we must, our consolidated financial statements must be prepared by legislation. And it's kind of a minimal standing of reporting, but that's all we have. And so for the tangible capital assets, we have categories already established. So I would want to know which of these go into those categories, how much, and what it does to those categories. So I'm, you know, this is very much an operational piece. I'm looking to have information that's at a higher level. And I suppose the only way I'm going to be able to get that is by taking these and then asking a lot of questions of staff outside of this meeting.
And that's fair enough. I think that what we're, and I will say, I think the staff are trying to get to those indicator pieces. We're not in this budget cycle. There's just no, with Ms. Carter having needed time off over the course of this process and the staff limitations, there's just no way to get to that fulsome piece. I think the year-over-year, those are available in the budget, in the budget binders and the details. So those have to, are electronically or on paper. So we'll have those out. But I hear what you're saying. I think my understanding, though, most of these projects, these are essentially, these aren't year-over-year in the sense that we haven't done budgeting software before. This is a new project. We haven't done the network switch replacement. So they're all largely capital projects. So, Council Patterson?
Yes, just further that, Mayor, then, it would be helpful, then, in going through this, if we could get some sort of a risk assessment from the staff on these items, so we know whether it's a court service, and whether it's a critical system, and what the level of risk is. So, you know, it's one thing to have a cost on here that will meet what some of our strategic vision items were. But we're obviously going to have budgets that are very much under pressure for many years to come. And so we have to use the money wisely, and it's very difficult to make the decisions. I think if we could identify risk, that would help us make quick decisions on a number of items and keep paring it down that way.
Your worship, just like to point out that we actually, in previous documents, did provide more specificity around each one of these projects. And risk was actually one of the categories that we responded to. So for every one of these, we have previously provided for council more detail. And we could provide that again, but we have done that. And I'd just also like to point out that I think the staff have definitely heard from council that they would like to look at a different process for budgeting. And I think on this agenda, you will see a proposal on how we might do things differently in the future, which I would hope would respond to, I think, a number of the points, which I think are very valid, that Council Patterson has raised and other members of council have raised.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. I'll add to that. I, you know, good operational review includes a risk-matrix approach to it. It just, it does. And ultimately, I mean, that's where I'm hoping that we get to over the next four years, that we're tying our operational decisions to that, and we have that clear, you know, so that it's in the ultimately color code and all those pieces in there. I appreciate the efforts that the staff have done to give risk. And I would actually say that I think they've done what they could. But, you know, one of the requirements of any kind of risk measure is standardization on that and clarity of what those risk, you know, components are. And while staff made every effort to do that, I don't, we don't have those, we don't actually have those frameworks. So the information that we got is as good as it can be. But I think until we actually roll that into more of an operational piece, it's just not going to be that. I'm not sure we'll have it next year, to be honest, Council Patterson, but we'll try. But I think it's a really important part of our piece. So I guess if I might bring that back to this conversation here, do we want to perhaps bundle some of these into sort of, you know, we'll take on some of these projects and recognizing that maybe we need some of that more information, more detailed information, before we sign off on which one of that comes forward? Those are options that we can take on this, but at the end of the day, we have to approve a budget in this go-round. And so that's going to be the goal here, is to get some sense of that. And I also agree on the reserve front, we need to have those policies in place. When is that due, by the way? That is actually coming up fairly shortly, is it not, the reserve policy, coming back to council?
Your worship, you actually have a policy already that was endorsed by council. The missing piece to that policy is the minimum and maximum balances that hasn't yet been addressed.
Okay, and we also haven't got a policy for how we're taking surpluses and rolling those into reserves at this point?
Actually, that's part and parcel of the policy that was brought forward last year.
Okay, but not specific to departments, then? It's just those capital pieces that are potted over. Is that correct?
Correct. It's a high-level policy at this point.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so are we okay sort of walking through these? And I think what might be worthwhile, so for, like, for Council Patterson, if you can kind of flag where you see the gap on these, then we can, you know, maybe sort of take that away. We're not going to get it all this time around. But I have questions on some of these as well, so perhaps we can just touch on those. In fact, the first one, which is the Long-Term Financial Sustainability Plan, is one of those ones, I think, that we need to know what we're getting out of that in the long-term operationally. I missed the presentation part of this, but I know we've had this presented previously. I'm just going to step through these, and at this point, I'm going to shut up and let council actually use their wisdom to guide the process. Are there any questions, concerns, ideas on the item number one, Long-Term Financial Sustainability Plan? Councilor Zelka?
Thank you very much, Chair. I just wanted to confirm what the $60,000 sort of was going to look like at the end of the process. Is it going to be simply a policy document, or is it going to be some setup of software? Or is there sort of going to be, is there consultant report out, do as part of this? Just some idea of the deliverable would be helpful.
Ms. Carter?
Yes, through your worship, the deliverable is that there will be a report for council. There'll be presentations for council. And essentially, what it does is it provides the municipality with a tool going forward. It incorporates all of the master plans, for example, that we have. What's happening in the economy. There's a number of different variables that go into the financial plan. And so it provides staff with a tool that can be updated annually to tell us where we need, where the risks are, and provide information for financial planning. So there is, it is consulting dollars, but the deliverable at the end is a tool for the municipality to use, along with a report for council. And I have worked through this process before. It's a very good process and was very well received by previous councils.
Thank you. Any other questions? I'm assuming you're going to touch on the asset management portion of this?
Absolutely, your worship. I just wanted to add that this is, excuse me, this is one of the projects that is in the asset management program. And we've discussed a number of times, to say fundamentally for 2019, that we want to make some progress in which it helps staff be able to inform council for decision-making purposes going forward about what's affordable and when for the next 20 years.
Thank you. And I guess, Council Green?
Through your worship, to Ms. Carter. I'm assuming that the Long-Term Financial Sustainability Plan underpins everything else. So it's a pretty critical piece. Am I correct in making that assumption? Thank you.
Ms. Carter?
Thank you. Yes, it is very critical. So it incorporates everything that's going on in the municipality and allows us to plan for, smooth the financial plans across many years. And so it's a very long-term plan.
Thank you.
Council Patterson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So could, just for a little more explanation, because we have heard many times, and in some of the data we've been given, that we have very limited resources. So this is going to be outsourced, I gather. And, but even outsourcing still requires some oversight. So if we could get a bit more insight as to how it's going to be managed, because we have been working on asset management for a considerable amount of time. And I just wanted to see that there are any roadblocks that were previously impeding progress in it, that this, that we have resolved a way to get through this to a successful conclusion.
Ms. Carter?
Through your worship, yes, this does consist of outsourcing initially. And in future years, municipal staff will be able to update it as it, we will be provided with the tool. It's a critical piece going forward, particularly with the asset management. And, yeah. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? I'm not seeing any. I'm going to be like one of those annoying defense attorneys who comes up, but I have some secrets, some new information. I noticed that the federal budget actually has another $60 million for asset management assistance through FCM. And it would obviously be incumbent upon us to make every effort to gather... to to gather some of that funding for this. I would probably be able to, maybe you'll be able to slide the budgeting software underneath that into into some of that ask as well, because they also apply together. Ms. Carter?
Thanks, your worship. I just wanted to add that this this particular tool is provides a sensitivity analysis tool for us, so any conditions that are changing throughout the municipality, we will be able to update and plan moving forward for it.
Thank you. Council Zelka?
Thank you so much, Chair. I presume item four, excuse me, item three on the agenda, will I delve deeper into this item or is it a different item? Just wanted some clarity, because if it's a different item, fine. If it's the same item, I'll save my questions till then.
This is a it's slight, Ms. Ms. Vella, your report?
Thank you, your worship. So I think what we'll be talking about is the acknowledgement that we have been midstream in this budget for a long time, and we when we've been talking about the changes and enhancements and a different path forward, we knew we weren't going to get there in 2019. So what item three on the agenda talks about is some of the clarification of expectations moving forward. So so what are we looking for in 2020? Because as soon as this budget is over, we're starting on next year's, and it's really about getting high level council direction to staff that we can actually bring back a product saying, have we hit your top wants? Have we got the framework right? And so that's what item three really is about.
Oh, Council Zelka again?
Sorry, a follow up, if I may. So it may be too late for this year, but certainly as as I see this this process roll out and and mature, I'm certainly going to want to like, not only looking for for more grants initiatives with respect to asset management, but also look at what UBCM is doing related to natural asset management and seeing if that could be possibly added in, I guess, at a later time. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Patterson?
Thank you, Mayor. And now 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 I will backtrack a little bit on the other statements I just made, because I I on some like on this one, the asset management software or the the long term financial sustainability plan, the accounting software, the asset management software, are the are are items on here, because we are facing the better part of a $300 million infrastructure problem, these to me are high risk items that must be done simply because of the magnitude of what that has to be managed with them. So there are a few items like this that I I think I can quickly gauge the risk and get through them, but there's a lot of it that it's just not apparent here.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Jones?
Your worship, sorry, just for for council's information, so your your senior management team meets every couple of weeks and and on every single agenda is grants. And we go around the table and ask ourselves, are the grants available for anything we're doing? And we actually have a person that is outside of our organization looking for opportunities for us, and if they see something, they give us a call and say, you know what, you might want to consider grants in this particular area. So it is something, to be honest, I think staff over the last couple of years have been incredibly successful in getting grants, and I think a large part of that is just because we're we're paying a lot more attention to it and making sure that it's always high on our priority list.
Thank you, Mr. Just, Council Green?
Thank you, Mayor.
Getting too informal.
I know, it's really formal. Through you to Mr. Jones, just or as a comment to everyone, that there is another huge potential for money for this for this district, and that is our development cost charges and community amenities. That is an area where we have not, in my opinion, we, you know, we haven't worked on that in terms of capturing that kind of, you know, that kind of money. So that's a whole other piece that I think you we can also include as as potential revenue. And I guess my feeling is that we may want to expedite that that project.
Thank you, Council Green. I I you can you can give us an update if you want, Mr. Anderson. I'm just trying to keep this on budget topic as much as possible, but I'll.
Well, it is related.
Yeah, okay, go ahead, Mr. Anderson.
So a a policy regarding community amenity contributions is being prepared. I will comment that we do achieve amenity contributions through development and have in the in the past, so we're not missing that opportunity. We're trying to bring a policy in that provides more clarity and certainty on that. And then on development cost charges, we are going to be looking at that and and looking at the the benefits and and costs associated with a program of that nature, and we'll bring that report forward this year as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. I guess I'll, so we have these two here. I'll I'm leaving them as apparently people are okay with. I really I would, we all feel that the absolute need for making sure that we're making our long term our decisions financially. You know, my only my only concern on this, you know, in 2019 is excellent that it's part of the asset management. You know, we do have to have make sure that operationally, I've seen just too many times in my life where tools get brought in and then there there isn't training for them, there isn't ongoing training for staff. And so the data that's necessary to make the pieces aren't aren't kept up. And so I think from a from a budget perspective, I'm I'm comfortable with this. I just, I think from a from a council perspective, we'd like to see that there's a strategy in place for using all of this wisely over the time and and make sure that we're we're including in that all of the training and the updates and pieces that allow it to be used well, because it doesn't take very many, you know, departments to not be inputting data and fall six months behind and it's just make work project and then nobody, then it falls apart. So that's my only caveat of that, I think, is a piece, and that's probably the biggest risk I would see in this in this piece. Council Patterson?
Perhaps we could get samples of the reporting that we would be expecting to get from it, samples that might give us more comfort on 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 what we will expect to then receive in the future as a benefit of this.
You're not looking for that at the end of this budgeting, before the budgeting? Okay, good, okay.
Respectfully, Mayor, I'll I'll wait at least 12 months.
Okay. Thank you. So I've got, we got that one. So yeah, if we just average 15 minutes, I think, this will be good, and we'll get through four and then we'll have to go home. There's a there's a bunch. Anyway, I think this is this is the nature of this piece, but I think that's that was a really good discussion, because I think it'll, I think that many of the same ideas and concerns will be reflected as we go forward. Budgeting software, again, this is a shift to adding more of a hosted budgeting tool that allows for for more streamlined. Can you just reiterate for us the benefit of this particular piece in terms of how it's going to help us with some of the goal, the the intentions raised by this council of trying to move their budgeting system forward and and clarifying some of these these processes in future?
Sure. So currently, everything is paper based and and manual, and we send out requests to the department heads for their budgets, and then they input it, and then it comes back, and we have to reinput it. So there's a lot of duplicating efforts, which isn't terribly efficient. This particular project would allow us to roll it out electronically to department heads, and they can fill out the information, so it doesn't have to be repeated again once it comes back to finance and and go through a number of those iterations. So definitely would gain some efficiencies. And the nice part about it is that it provides for better reporting, it integrates with our current financial software.
Are there any questions? Excellent, well, let's average 30 seconds, I think, and then we'll do a lot better on this. Next, payroll software upgrade, unless a year later, we're not going to touch on it at this point. I guess the only just would like assurance that in the consideration of these first two, that the that one obviously tied into our overall financial system. There's a plan in place, just looking for a yes, that there's a plan in place for all these financial tools. Yes, okay, thank you. Procurement review, is this the cost, is this just for a consultant to help out with this?
Yes, that's correct. It is just to standardize some of our forms and and streamline our processes.
Okay. Any questions? Seeing, can I just ask from a, is there any, I mean, sometimes that's just worth doing just for consistency's sake, but is there any, is there any perceived benefit of this to to from a fiscal perspective?
There is. Currently, we we cobbled together different tender documents and RFP documents and things like that. So there is some risk there. If we were challenged, for example, and and missed crossing a T or dotting an I, then there could be additional risk. So we really need to make sure that we're doing things consistently, and this area has grown quite a bit over the years. So we want to make sure that we're consistent and on the right track going forward.
Okay, thank you. Network switch replacement, this is putting money aside to to do that work in three years' time. Is there any questions on that? Seeing, is this not part of our sort of regular, like we do have some reserves for internal operational pieces? This is not, this would not be covered within that?
We could certainly look at that further. We do have some reserves, but this is going to be an ongoing cost, and I think we need to keep putting, setting funds aside for this as the municipality grows and the IT infrastructure grows.
Yeah, thank you. Any questions from council note? Tempest web service and web application upgrade, $20,000. I believe this has been a while in coming. Ms. Carter?
Yes, this is essentially phase two of a of a project that we started last year. So the current, the current software is also end of life at the end of this year, so it's pretty much a requirement.
And just just jog my memory, because I'm I apologize, I I didn't bring my binders from previous years here. My recollection is that there was some money in for budgeting software and Tempest web upgrade in previous budgets. So is this, is this all net new money or some of this, I'm assuming none of this is carryover from previous years that we didn't spend?
You're absolutely correct. That's a good question. The budget software was budgeted some time ago and was never spent, so it is sitting in carry forward. It's not new tax money. The Tempest money, we did part of the project already, so this is a new piece, which would be tax money.
Okay, and everything else on there is is new that we've gone through so far?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And just so I'm clear that just when in the in the roll up dollars that we have at the end of all of this, so if that say that $30,000 is coming from taxes, is that removed from this number of, say, 240 or sorry, $480,000 of other strategic capital that's here? Or is that included in there?
Just for clarity, is that for the website upgrade?
No, for like the the temp, the budgeting software that was in previous years that is being rolled forward. We have in our in the other sheet, you know, a total of $480,000 for other strategic capital. Is that is that total all tax dollars or is that?
Yes, that would be tax dollars.
So we would ignore this particular $30,000 for the for the budgeting software?
Yes, the budgeting software is would be pulled in from reserve or carry forward.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on the Tempest? Yes, Council Zelka?
Tempest is my favorite thing to talk about. I am very pleased to see that this project is being finalized and being so that the entire tool is now brought up to speed with .net and made compatible and made whole. I note that a number of our other fellow districts and towns and townships have relied upon Tempest and have made available on their public websites access, direct access to all the permits, development permits, building permits and those sorts of things. And if I remember correctly, it was Central Sandage or possibly North Sandage, they said it only costs them $17,000 to put all that stuff online. And I thought, wow, that sounds amazing. The question, which I guess would be through you and then maybe through you possibly finally landing in building and planning, is that is there any plans to bring that forward? Is this a new initiative? If we did, how could we possibly leverage what we will have at the end of this year?
Ms. Carter?
So through your worship, yes, Tempest is a wonderful tool and can do all kinds of different things. There are different modules involved. That particular option, we have not looked at as of yet. We do have limited resources in terms of implementing new software initiatives, but that's certainly something that we could look at going forward.
Ms. Carter, can you give us some idea, order of magnitude of licensing costs? Is that sort of, are those sorts of add-ons 1,000, 10,000, 100,000? Like, where what are we looking at for that? And and might that be included in, I noticed that in next year, we have a a website upgrade plan in 2020, and and could that form part of that $30,000? I guess is the nub of my question.
Right.
Ms. Koston?
Through your chair, are you specifically talking about Tempest? So our our Tempest maintenance costs annually are around $27,000 a year, and as we add on modules, it's usually a 20% cost in addition for for maintenance each year on what the actual cost of the module is. And modules range anywhere between 10 and $30,000. So every year, we have that increase. It just depends on what the module is.
Okay, so 10 to $20,000 for the module and then just a and then the the 20% annual after that, plus the cost of integrating into the website if you want to do that? Yeah, implementation, okay, thank you. Any other questions? Asking it next year. Well, I think it's a very reasonable ask, because I've been part of that process is, you know, operationally, I mean, we're not here to talk about pieces, but if we can take away the 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 desktop servicing, so people come into the counter to ask for these sort of routine questions, obviously, that that allows our staff to do other work, and that's an important part. So those kind of costs can be quite often covered easily if, as long as we find the operational side of it as well. So I appreciate the staff, I know, building and planning are really looking at many ways of of streamlining and and moving things forward, and they've done a very good job. I've already speeding up the processes, so. Microsoft 365 upgrade, this is, I know, taking our our email to a hosted model. Any questions for staff? Council Appleton?
Thank you, worship. Through you to staff, the 60,000 a year is essentially an ongoing licensing fee for the service and covers things like cloud based storage and those kinds of things, I'm assuming. Does, I'm just wondering whether staff could comment on if it's replacing existing server server system or something of that nature, whether there's any cost savings implied in in moving to the cloud based system?
Through your chair, yeah, through your chair. Actually, it's a software upgrade, so it doesn't impact any of the servers. There's no, we have our servers in house, and it's just the actual software itself. Upgrades will be, actually, it mitigates quite a bit of risk, because right now, through Word and any documents that can be emailed and you open them up, there's actual potential viruses that can happen. So we're trying to, we're trying to mitigate that risk to the organization, so it doesn't pick up any unknown viruses through Microsoft applications. The the savings, unfortunately, there is no savings that is going to happen, and the annual costs, software has changed their licensing agreement. Most software companies nowadays, it's on an annual basis, it's not that one time amount that you would pay, and it's usually the same over year over year over year now, so. Did I answer your question?
I believe you did, but I'm gonna have a follow up. Ms. Carter?
So right now, we have a number of older versions as well, and so our managed service provider is recommending that we upgrade, because some of them are vulnerable.
Sorry, can you just clarify what the the Microsoft 365 includes? Is it is it all of the Office licensing as well as the Exchange Server and?
Yes, through your chair, it's the it's the email and all the Microsoft products, so they'll all be on the same platform.
Okay, but the email is not hosted, then? This is still an in-house?
No.
Exchange?
Sorry, it'll be hosted in the cloud. So anytime, so that's one of the emergency, what is it, proposals that we're trying to achieve is that if we've lost any power because of an emergency purposes, we'll be able to manage our emails and it's not going to affect our in-house servers.
Okay. This is, I, Council App, Council Patterson, I'll go back to Council Appleton, because he wanted to have to follow up, and then Council Patterson?
Yes, thank you, your worship, just very quickly. How do I ask this question? Essentially, is the cost, the sort of the yearly licensing cost based on number of users? And I guess this is projected based based on, are there categories of users, i.e. if you have between 100 and 250 users, et cetera, et cetera? So we're we're falling into this expense category because we have X number of of users that are anticipated to use the system? Is that correct? And this also includes all of this, this includes parks, rec and culture facilities and and everybody associated with that?
Yes, through your chair, that's correct. It's the number of users it's based on.
Thank you. Council Patterson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and through you to staff. It would be, I think, because technology is such a growing cost for all businesses in general. And yet there are demands because the public do want better websites and better access, faster access. So there's a lot of, and, and members of council want better financial reporting. But it, it is a growing cost and, and that's why I like to look at the, the, the book values of them and, and look at the, at the tangible capital asset, total number for IT equipment. Because I, I think capturing that kind of across the board, also, I mean, it has been a growing cost over the years that did not exist before. So I just throw that out as a useful, something to track perhaps for next year.
Counselor Green?
Thank you, through you, Mayor, to Ms. Carter. You mentioned limited staff resources around, around the computer end. Can you elaborate just a little bit? What, what would you need ideally to, to make all of this support, you know, better supported? Because that, that is a concern of mine is it's wonderful to have all of this software and systems, but if we don't have adequate system support, that's, that's a concern. Thank you.
Ms. Carter?
Through the chair, last, through last year's budget, council was able to provide assistance for us to either bring on an additional position or a managed service. And we did go with the managed services and that has helped tremendously. Going forward, it really depends on the number of new implementations, for example. And if we want to do more than what we're doing now, that could be challenging for us.
Counselor Green?
As supplementary through you, your worship, then Ms. Carter, you will certainly put your hand up if you need additional help. I mean, because I think it's wonderful to have all the software and, and obviously it's required and it's an operational requirement. But if we don't have the staff capacities to support it adequately, it's almost self-defeating. So that's just my concern. And I just want to make sure that you make us aware if, if, you know, if, if things are not going as well as hoped. Thank you.
Through the chair, thank you for that.
Any other pieces? I, I have, I have some concerns with this one. I, I've steadfastly avoided all software licensing in my world of IT because I, I really hate it. But I, the pitch has always been everywhere I've ever gone that, that, you know, organizations do a software licensing review. There's a number of companies that will often do it for free. Microsoft pays for them, for their partners to do that, to do analysis. And the pitch has always been that when you move to these services, you're, because you are getting rid of the, the Exchange Server locally, you don't have that maintenance cost, you don't have the licensing cost for the servers, you don't have those, all these other pieces, the staffing costs required to maintain it, to do the backups internally, all of that. The, the cost is, should be a wash for the most part for these managed service models. And the licensing is often dramatically lower if you're, if you do it very intelligently and go through it. So I'm, I need to know when I'm looking at this number, $60,000 a year, like where's the corresponding cost savings coming in here? Because I, I've never heard of this going in where there's not other corresponding cost savings. Is this, so maybe you can just answer that question? And, and is this something that we just, we, we go down this path? But we, this year we go through that, that fulsome analysis to make sure that we're actually, and this may tie into our, our managed services contract. Because I don't know if we, if we get rid of two servers, for example, and the backup this year, are we still paying a fixed amount for all of our infrastructure? Maybe this would be better to implement at the end of that cycle. I'll, I'll throw that back to, to staff. Ms. Koston?
Thank you, your worship. The Microsoft 365 is an application that will be in the cloud. Right now, our email is on a server that is, has many virtual servers attached to them. So there will, we still need our in-house server for our data, our Tempest, Vatom, all these other servers. So we don't see any cost savings in that respect. It's more of a, of a benefit and reduction of risk for the organization to put it in the cloud. This is recommended by our IT consultants just because they've, they, they can see what different applications and, and that we have out in, out that staff are using. And they're looking to see how they can mitigate the risk in, in that part. Did I answer all of what you're saying? Because we still need that in-house server and that's the, that's, unless we go completely into the cloud, they, then we will definitely, you know, save on server costs, save on network, save on everything. But this is just one single application that is going to be in the cloud.
Okay. So that's the, I guess that's the question is that's, that's something we want to, is there enough benefit there for us to do that? There's a risk of, of keeping it in-house, but there's also a, a cost here of, of doing it. So that's, that's for us to decide in the, at the end of this, whether or not. Counselor Zelka?
Well, for, for those techies in the crowd, we know that Microsoft is sort of changing its business model and forcing the rest of the world to change with them as they move towards essentially a cloud, cloud-based approach as opposed to a server-based approach, which they had before. So I know this, the Microsoft Office 365 could come with potentially additional benefits, but a bit like Tempest, you may have to pay for each and every bits and bit and piece. Most likely at this cost, it's just the entire Microsoft Office suite. I don't know if it includes Visio, I don't know if it includes Project, but certainly the core suite aspect would be, would be my guess. I just wanted to throw one additional item in there for staff's consideration, maybe for next year. Open source software. There's a website, LibreOffice.org. Is the entire Microsoft Office suite for free, including Visio and Project, Microsoft Project, ProjectLibre.com. All of these are Europe, European-based and they're based on the Open Office, open source tools. For anyone who's ever heard of Linux, it's free, surprise, surprise. The support costs, if you want, you want to be supported, most, most big, most of the banks pay for the support, but they don't actually pay the licensing cost. In this case, I imagine most of this is licensing cost, not necessarily just support. So it's certainly a consideration for us to consider as it's becoming less and less risky to consider these very stable and mature open source tools. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Zelka. Definitely beyond the scope of this year's budget. But, all right, thank you. Committee meeting room refit and lobby viewing. This is the, the fairly minor upgrades to, to sound. So when we have large meetings, people can hear out front and some AV equipment for the, the room. Any questions on this? Counselor Green?
Just quickly through you, your worship, to Ms. Hopkins. Will that include agendas that will be broadcast for council and committee of the whole meetings so that audiences can follow along as we go through our agenda? Would that be part of the upgrade?
I'm not sure if that's Ms. Hopkins or that's you.
Sorry, I'm not sure who to ask then.
Through you, Chair. That wasn't part of our proposal at this time. That's certainly something that we could explore.
Okay, I, I guess my feeling is that we're not optimizing what we have in this room in terms of our screening ability and, and I, down the road, I think that would be a very useful way of, of including the public in our, our nightly agendas and so on and, and to enhance engagement that way. So it's, you know, it's not something we need to approve now, but I would certainly like to make the point. I think I made the point earlier this term that it would be really helpful and so thank you.
I think procedurally, that's something we can look at. I mean, one of the nice things is we've changed our agendas, thanks to Counselor Green's suggestion, that we actually have a summary of the, each item on the agenda. It would be not unreasonable for us, frankly, just to have the PDF of the agenda up there and just scroll down as each one comes up on the screen and be almost that simple if we wanted to do something like that in time. So we'll just look at that from a procedural perspective, not a project piece. Okay, so we have that piece, website support. This is just an increase in the amount of money that we're spending on the website or is this people services? Ms. Hopkins?
Yes, that is, so currently this is support that's provided by our managed services. And so what we're looking at is being able to leverage on that existing support. But each time we ask for assistance in making a change to the website, there's a ticket that's opened and that's charged. And so we are asking to increase that monthly budget so that we can maintain or access more support so that we can start making some improvements on things that are already existing that we may not have incorporated into our website, but just getting that support from the provider.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Again, I would just ask in the, in the big scheme of operational pieces, the, the licensing from the website itself is, you know, we can make those changes ourselves, you know, there's a process for that. Appreciate there's not time or skill sets necessarily to do those changes. But, you know, as we're looking at managing our, our communications going forward, that might be something that we're, we just tie that, that level, the sort of the direct updates to the website internally as much as possible. Ms. Hopkins?
Through you, Chair, or to you, Chair. So some of this is also training and it's, if we don't necessarily know how to incorporate certain available functionalities, it's to be able to ask how to get those in. So it's, it's not asking them to do it for us. In some cases, it's providing us with the knowledge of how to do it and then we can take that and train our staff and go forward.
Thank you very much. I just, for those of kind of council interest, I did speak to the, the website developers that built and host our website and they're, it's a pretty, it's still a current version of the software and they can, they can add additional plugins and things as necessary. So my understanding is some of this money would also be allow us to kind of, if there's new tools available that we can, we could use them for some of those, those times. So, yeah, so, thank you. And then we have records management and perhaps a a little bit of clarity in terms of what, what this actually entails. Is that, Ms. Hopkins again, is that, or Mr. Jones?
Part of this is, our records management system at the moment is in critical need of a refresh. And part of this will include consulting services as this is quite a significant undertaking that will require quite an overview and overhaul of what we're currently doing. It's not something that we feel that we can continue to try and address with our current resources. So part of that will be consulting services and then the rest of, of that will be suggestions as to what we need in order to bring those systems up to date.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Zelka?
Thank you so much, Chair. Will this, just to confirm, will this amount of money make FOI responses faster, quicker, more amazing?
Through you, Chair. Well, that would certainly be a benefit as currently we're spending a lot of, we, we have room to improve our efficiencies in that area, which will speed up the ability to access records and, and pull them out of where they're stored.
Mr. Jones, you wanted to add something?
Your worship, Ms. Hopkins is being incredibly polite. We don't have a records management system, to be perfectly blunt. And we are at risk with things like FOI. It takes us incredible time to find documents. We have very little in the way of institutional memory here at the district. And as things change, we, we need to have those systems in place. We need to start really at the basics and then move up to electronic document management. And so this is really just to get us started. But we, we, this is a significant risk. So, you know, when we respond to FOI requests, when we respond to the ombudsman, we're not, we do our very best, but we are not certain we're providing the, the level of service that we should. And we do need to start establishing that institutional memory. So when people come in, if you have an electronic system at some point in time, you know what? These local government, it's the same thing over and over and over and over and over. I've been in this a long time. So when you don't have to spend a lot of time looking for information that, for things that you've dealt with in the past, it can save staff an incredible amounts of time. So we're at the very, very basic level and we really need to get moving on this.
Okay, thank you. I don't think you'd get any argument from council that this is an important part of managing our community well. I think what would be helpful for this too is not for the budget, it's fine. But I think as we get closer to as what this money is being used for, what is the deliverable going to be for the amount of money? Because reviewing it, making it better is nice, but the specifics are going to be, it's hard for us to hold accountable the, the use of those funds unless we have a pretty clear answer as to what the deliverable is expected for that amount of money. So no argument, that's a necessity for us to do, to be well-run government, but just to get a bit of clarity. Public engagement, and this is a bunch of pieces of the community piece and includes communication and things as well, I'm assuming. Can you just quick, quickly overview what that $30,000 a year is?
Your worship, really this is a placeholder so that we can bring a report back to council to get some clear direction on of the many items that were included in the, in the task force report that staff still have to report back to you on about what we're currently doing, what we see as achievable in the short term, how we want to go moving forward. This is really a placeholder to, to bring, be able to bring back to council to say, we have capacity to do this and now we have some funds to put towards it. So it really will entail a report back to council on, on the details of how this money is spent. It's a very large list of to-dos in that report. And I want to be really clear on what we're already doing, what we see as achievable, what we want to lay out in 2019 and have a more robust discussion going forward for 2020.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Zelka, Counselor Patterson?
Thanks so much, Chair. I, I just want to compliment staff on our social media engagement. Already I've noticed noticeable change in the last year regarding social media. Most likely you have the analytics to, to prove it, but subjectively, I'm just very pleased at, at, at the, the branding and, and how we're coming across on the public. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Counselor Patterson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Again, again, I'm going to echo something that Counselor Green referred to before. And the public engagement piece was quite large and it is very important. But I, again, just, it's the resources. How do we, how do we resource it? Because it can definitely be a time for staff to, to get at this and the conversations that need to take place. And there's an awful lot of important things that, and we need this certainly around a better budgeting process. But I, I am concerned when I see all of these lists and there's not really anything in this package that really speaks to resourcing capacity, other than it that we're under-resourced, it says in here. But there's nothing that really lays out a plan for that. And I would really like to have more comfort that we can actually achieve these things because I think it's going to be very important to establish honest, transparent, logical communication with residents on some of these budget items that we're facing. Thank you.
Counselor Green?
Thank you and thank you, Counselor Patterson. Through you, your worship, or as a general comment, I think there is some low-hanging fruit around community engagement. I don't think it has to be an expensive undertaking in every respect. It's multifaceted, of course, and there are many tools that, that comprise public engagement. But I, as you know, this one is near and dear to my heart and it's something I've talked about a lot over the last few years. So I'm hoping that we can seize the low-hanging fruit before it drops to the ground. And then, I agree, then we need to analyze what are the other pieces and how much will they cost? And what kind of staff time will they take? But there are a couple of things that we can do that where the onus is more on council members than on staff. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess my only question on this one is why $30,000? In, in this year, if we haven't figured out what we're doing yet, why have a budget number attached to it? Other than, you know, if we're, if we're still going to take six months to get there, we're going to be at the end of 2019. It's actually a fairly large amount of money for Oak Bay. I know it doesn't seem like a lot, but it's, it's a pretty substantial amount, given how much we spent on communications and engagement in the past.
Not counselor, thank you. So your worship really, as Ms. Verella said, this is a placeholder. There is a, the, the task force report suggested some very significant initiatives that we, you know, there, there might be some very low-hanging fruit that we can do and maybe are already doing. But if council wants to step up But if council wants to step up and do some of those things that are included in that task force report, we are going to need money. And this is just a best guess to get it going, to be perfectly honest.
So I would, I would personally put this to council. Do we, my preference would be that we, you know, we maybe earmark $10,000 in terms of cash, but really have a focus on some of the core things operationally to say move our, our agendas earlier, those sorts of things that essentially provide better information flow to the community for our meetings and less about other maybe project-based things. And we can have some meetings in the community, we can have things of that nature that don't cost a lot of money, but having some money in here makes sense. But I think personally, I would probably prefer us to be focusing, like, let's do our jobs really, really well, get the information shared and, and maybe not so much cash attached to this. But Counselor Green?
I don't disagree, but I also think that it's important to have a placeholder. I, I agree with staff that if, if we don't have a placeholder, and frankly, we don't know how much it's going to cost, do we? I mean, I don't know what $30,000 looks like or $10,000 looks like for community engagement at this point. So perhaps we should, if we can, defer this as a placeholder or, or keep it as a placeholder until we get the report from, from you staff on what community engagement looks like, what the priorities are, what they will cost and so on. Is there a timeline through you Chair to, for that staff report?
Ms. Varela?
Not at this time. Really will be focusing on those items that both council and staff identify as high levels of risk. This will be part of developing the department work plans and that's where we're going to see where this would fit in the timelines. And we, we really have to look at our highest risk items first.
And, and I agree with your permission. I, I totally agree with you. But there is also a level of risk around not engaging appropriately or adequately with the public. And I think that was one of the, one of the issues in the last election. And I would, I would dare say that Oak Bay needs to improve in this area. I honestly, I, I think being away from public life for four years and having a chance to observe, I feel that we need to improve our public engagement activity and, and sharing information and being more transparent and open. I mean, we, I don't mean staff, but we as a council need to set that policy direction. Just my view, but thank you.
Ms. Varela, you, you touched the microphone. It's always the sign you want to talk.
Thank you, your worship. And I think that's it. I think collectively, those are governance decisions for council. And so staff's going to give you recommendations on risk, council's going to weigh in on that and do, make that governance decision and staff will implement accordingly. So again, we serve at your pleasure. We just don't have the answer tonight.
But thank you.
Thank you. I think we're going to get the questions from the audience at the end. If that's, that's fair, just because I want to make sure we have a chance to get to this table. Counselor Patterson, do you have something to?
Yes, thank you Mayor. Just a, a quick follow-up on, on Counselor Green's comment and your earlier comment. I think it is important to have a placeholder of some type there, but I think it's more important, certainly because the, the budgeting and the asset managements and what is going on in the community. I think the really key message to get out to the community has to be improved information. And, and we're already in April. We're going to be turning around and going back into budgets in June. So that we can refine the information that we're giving to give the public, you know, a, a, a better insight into that. And we can do that, I think, in fairly cost-effective public meetings, once we have better information for them and build on public engagement going forward. So you know, and if I total this page, it's, it's almost another 2% of our, of our, you know, this page is, this one column is almost 2% of our budget. So it's a significant, it's a significant expense.
Thank you. Counselor Zelka?
Thanks so much Chair. Just wanted to confirm that the website upgrade was deferred till 2020? That $30,000 was moved forward? So as a result of that being moved forward, I am a little more comfortable with seeing that as the public engagement stay $30,000 this year. And then depending on what comes back and, and what it looks like, then those later numbers may, may change accordingly. However, for example, today, putting up page 37 of the financial plan up on the screen to help our, our audience is something that could be done without cost. Today for a hundred dollars, $200, we could make one of those, what do you call it, sidewalk boards. Every time we have a meeting, we put a sidewalk board out, out front to let people know and walk by traffic. The kids, whoever isn't online, whoever is online but distracted could know what's going on. I mean, there's all sorts of things we could do that are less expensive necessarily. But of course, it needs to be planned. So I just offer that as, as a suggestion. We've only to support at least, at least this year until I see what happens. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Appleton?
Thank you, your worship. I would also speak in favor of keeping this budget line item where it is. As a, as a member of the, of the task force that helped put together the recommendations. I, I think that it's, it isn't a surprise to anybody here at the table and certainly not to staff that Oak Bay, and granted, we're not a large municipality, but Oak Bay has no dedicated communication staff. So when we're trying to put messaging out there and we're trying to manage things like social media and those types of things, I know that staff collectively are doing it off the sides of their desks. So taking that into consideration is, is definitely something that, that I heard through that process. In addition to that, I, I think that this essentially, to my mind, is an, is an expense that is going to arise at some point soon, no, no matter how we decide to present it in the budget. There is a higher expectation on behalf of the public for engagement with their local government and having local governments provide information to them. That, that is, that, that's just now the case. And I don't think that that's going to change. So I think that we need to sort of look at how we allocate resources to communicating with our citizens beyond the, the tools that we've typically used. So I, I think that that's important. And then as council and, and staff have heard me mention before, being able to have effective communications tools helps the public understand the work that we already do. So it helps us get more value, helps our citizens understand the value of what we're already doing by communicating it to them effectively. So when we're working on public works, when we're increasing the allocations to capital, capital plan, those types of things, when we're revising our, our plan, our financials and budgeting, we need to also communicate these things to the public so that they understand, you know, what a potentially significant tax increase amounts to. So I, I would just ask that, that we consider those things when we talk about this communications point.
Thank you, Counselor Appleton. All right, I'm going to move on to the FOI and media training for council and senior management. That's a one timeline item, I think fairly straightforward in terms of just getting skill levels up for, for everybody attached. Any questions on that? Is it, I guess, I have a question on that. Is there not just best practices? Do we not have a standard, instead of a training budget that actually raises the skill level of everybody, you know, whether that's management training for labor relations pieces, whether it's line-level people for FOI things or, or customer service? Like, is there any training budget currently in our operating budget or is it department by department? Or how is that managed currently? Sorry, that was out of the blue question. So I'm not stepping anything here.
No, that's okay, your worship. So there is a, a standard training budget. This $30,000 is in addition to that. So, and it's not department by department. It's for the organization as a whole.
It's $10,000, not $30,000.
Right, sorry.
Yeah, but yeah. Oh, the staff training and development piece, okay. Fair enough. So a total of $40,000 for staff development and training and council and other pieces, FOI. Okay, and just again, for my comfort, for those two line items, where did that $40,000 number come from? And is it, is like, is that a pretty accurate number in terms of what's required? Because it's again, a fairly large number.
Your worship, the $10,000 is a pretty accurate number because we did a significant amount of FOI training for staff this year. So we have a pretty good, a pretty good sense of what that would entail. So this would be a little bit higher level for the, the directors and for council. I think it's really important that members of council get this training. So we're all on the same page and everyone understands, again, this is a, this is a risk management issue that we understand how that legislation works.
Counselor Green?
Thank you. And through you Chair, is the 40, so there is a $40,000 total amount for the organization as a whole? Is that what, I'm sorry, did I misunderstand?
If, if I could, your worship. So there are individual department budgets that are standing. What we're asking for is an additional $10,000 for the FOI and media training and an additional $30,000 for training that relates to respectful workplace, customer service and management leadership development. Our HR person has costed those programs out and that's where the $30,000 on the following line comes from.
Thank you. And as you know, I, I'm, I'm a huge supporter of employee learning. And you know, creating a culture that enhances training and learning, especially for staff. Because otherwise, the organization won't grow and change. And I think that's important. It also has to do with employee recruitment and retention. So I, I'm, I'm a big supporter of, of this kind of funding. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Green. Any further questions? Nope, okay. Commissions and committees review, there's no costs, budget process review, no costs, organizational optimization, no costs. Some of these pieces are creeping into these, Ms. Ms. Carter?
Sorry, your worship. Before we move on to the next section, I wanted to let you know that I gave you some incorrect information earlier when we were talking about budget and, or the budget software and the Tempest upgrade. Those are actually both being suggested as funded from carryforwards.
Okay. Oh, they are. Both, so the Tempest as well. Okay. But still the correct number at the bottom of all of this, the, is, is the correct one. We don't get to take away $50,000 from, from that number. You're not, you're not helping really, I gotta say. Okay, we got Parks, Recs and Culture piece. We've had a very detailed discussion last week, but maybe we can just kind of get through these reasonably quickly. Just from, from council's perspective, where are people at on the Wi-Fi upgrade this year? Counselor Appleton and then Counselor Zelka?
In brief, thank you, your worship. I, I, I think that it was raised by a number of councillors and potential number of people that potentially this needed some more exploration, that there might be some other options. I, I do not understand, I do not pretend to understand the technology, but I still have some fairly big question marks about how we might defray the costs here or at least manage an upgrade without having to just sort of pay straight out for licensing and equipment. It, it seems like there should be some other options there. I understand very much what, what staff are trying to achieve here, but I'm, I'm, I, I understand that there may be some other things that we need to explore.
Okay, thank you. And Counselor Zelka?
Thank you very much Chair. I, I was expecting a bit more information that I should have, I apologize, I should have shared with all of council. I had a, some, some discussion with, with staff and, and the, the information that was given back to me, and I'm sure staff will correct me, was that it was originally justified during the public session as being something for the public that was potentially causing some, some issues with the public. However, the, the indication from the consultant was that it appeared to be more for, for the private network. So, so Ray basically said, well, leave it with me while he tries to figure out whether, is it a public network or a private network? Because depending on what it is, this cost is useful or, or should stay or possibly could change. And I'm, I'm waiting to hear back, so.
I think for the purposes of this budget, we have to make a decision with the information that we have. Maybe there's more coming next week. But I agree, I think there was, there was legitimate questions raised last time and I'm happy to strike a committee of one to go with Counselor Zelka, if you want to go ahead and go do that, not tonight. But I think those are something that we can consider in terms of, of what that is. Because there may be some additional benefits, needs, et cetera, for the community as well, if we're looking at this from a, an operational need, perhaps for public works or for other pieces. Ms. Costin?
Thank you, your worship. What my understanding was from the IT consultant was that there is expectations from the public to have better Wi-Fi because right now it's not, it, it's not performing properly. And instead of doing one through Shaw Open or, or what have you, Talis Open, they've, they have to put up the switches and the, and the equipment. And so the cost of the $75,000 is the equipment. But it's also an internal component. So if they're going to do a course at Windsor Pavilion or any of the remote sites or even at, at the rec center itself, they actually indeed have internal access to our network and our drives. So otherwise, they're not able to connect to our system at all. So they, we're going to go the one way and, and then it's the same equipment for everything. It's, it's basically, 75 is a high figure. We, it, it could be a little bit lower than that, so.
Okay, thank you. I, Counselor Zelka, anything else to add? I mean, at the end of the day, we're just applying a number here.
Yeah, I'd be fine to report back by, by, by next Wednesday and potentially suggest that we make a final decision on that then.
Sure. I mean, I don't know that we have to make final, final decisions on this. We have to apply budget. So there, we have the option perhaps of looking at this, maybe putting some seed money in here to the budget, maybe not the full $75,000 and looking at if there's, if there's surplus in, in Parks and Rec to fund that. We, there's a number of things we can look at. Walbeen railing, any questions on that? No. Sports View Lounge carpet replacement? No. Windsor Park picnic shelter? Monterey Lobby carpet replacement? Quail Room floor replacement? And again, I'm sort of hoping that these things will ultimately, in a big wonderful world in the future, be able to kind of just allocate a certain amount of money every year for these sorts of incidental capital pieces. So we're not up and down and trying to do it as a one-off piece. Anderson Hill Park kiosk replacement? Elimination of One Guard pool shifts, I think. It's kind of a funny thing to have in here, but there we go. I appreciate it in the, in the five-year plan. Nothing, nothing, nothing. Really, the urban forest strategy implementation, the $43,000. This is obviously part and parcel of our pieces. Are any questions on the number itself? We don't have, this was really your chance last week to ask these questions, but is there any questions that have arisen from council in the time between? No. Counselor Zelka?
As long as the bylaw comes back this year, or sorry, in the next, in the next, if you're here before the next budget, I'll be happy with this. Thank you.
Thank you. And the playground master plan, approximately $40,000 in the, in the piece of, of that. And we didn't get really into all of that agreement or disagreement in terms of what we were funding. It's just being left in here as a, as a cost item. This reflects sort of the conversation. Counselor Green?
I'm reminded that Mr. Herman talked about a master plan for Parks, Recreation and Culture generally, an overall master plan rather than piecemealing master plans. So I don't know if that has any bearing on, on this item. Mr. Jones, through you Chair?
Your worship, that, from staff's perspective, it would be ideal to do a, the larger master plan and this would be part of it. But saying that, it was a priority for the commission, but from a, a staff perspective, we would prefer to do the larger master plan and fold this. It's important work, but we'd fold this into it.
Thank you.
Counselor, oh, good. Counselor Appleton?
Thank you, your worship. I, I lean with this item potentially towards not, well, not necessarily deferring it, but rolling it into a subsequent plan that was, that was more integrated. When we discussed this around the table for Parks, Rec and Culture projects, I, I didn't get the sense that there was sort of universal acceptance that this was the, that there was, that there was a universal agreement that this was the way forward and, and really clearly recognizing that this was a top strategic priority for the Parks, Rec and Culture Commission. And I definitely want to acknowledge that. But in terms of overall budget impact in, in a year that, that is going to be challenging as it is and with staff's recommendation to look at a more integrated plan, I, I lean more in that direction.
Your worship, I, I should have said the, the plan, the five-year plan actually has in 2021 funds for the larger master plan. So this is not saying that you would not be doing the parks, the playground plan, but it would be deferred to 2021.
Okay, thank you. If, if I may, I have a, a bigger question on this. And it is really striking in this particular case because the summary of this pillar is this almost exactly to the dollar, the same as the surplus reported last year by Parks, Rec and Culture. These are all listed as tax dollars, but we do have that, that again, not really a surplus, but unspent expected expenditures onto Parks, Rec and Culture. Is there any mechanism by which we, you know, year over year, we've taken, you know, where Parks and Rec are, are being run efficiently and they're, they're topping up their agendas that we're using those surpluses for some of these types of projects? Because it's sort of not clear what's happening with that money. Because it's sort of not clear what's happening with that money right now. It's going to general revenue, general reserves, but this, it's just very highlighted this year because of that, that parity. Ms. Carter?
So through your worship, the rec center doesn't actually have a surplus. They do have a lesser subsidy, I call it. For this year, we are in the process of our audit already, so I, I believe that we would have a very difficult time trying to allocate surplus dollars. In future years, what we could do is bring forward a report to council with some suggestions in terms of allocating potential surplus.
Okay. I'm just going off of the budget that they provided, which was the actuals versus the, the piece. So in that, in that, there was $215,000 or so of, of, you know, net below what they were budgeting, so that's the, the piece here. So you're saying there's some real mechanism for us to do that within this, within this budget, just take some of those, those funds that were, that were not surplus, but surplus in Parks, Rec, and Culture, and apply them to any of these projects?
That's, that's correct. Unfortunately, we're already too far down the road with the audited financial statements, but in future, we could certainly bring that forward.
Okay. I, I might have a suggestion on this question of the, of the playground master plan versus the larger master plan versus the, the priority that, that the commission struck for the playgrounds. One, perhaps we actually put, if that $40,000 that's there for the playground master plan, perhaps, because there's upwards of $100,000 to $200,000 possible for that, that overarching master plan. You know, do we put some of that money into that, so we're not having a $200,000 hit on that year? And perhaps, and I was just saying, maybe we just actually look at splitting that. So maybe we put $20,000 in for, to socket away for that, and $20,000 in that playground master plan, actually use that to fund, like seed fund a playground. Because one of the things that they raised as a possibility was actually doing some fundraising and building a, essentially a reference, hot, you know, accessible playground. And that would essentially, instead of doing a study on it, actually fund an actual playground, which might be a little bit more appealing, given the, the state of things, and not duplicate the, the planning. That's just, that's just one suggestion I might have in there in terms of, if we're looking at within the same dollar amount, or just taking, cutting it in half and using that as a seed fund for, for a playground, but just an idea. All right, I'll leave that as an idea floating. Councilor Zelka?
Are you inviting a, a, a motion? Or are you inviting us to, to just simply nod along with you and leave it at that?
Well, is there, is there any interest in that? I guess I'll just look around the table if that is a... Yes, not today.
I, I think, given the, the, what we now understand about when the master plan is going to kick in, and the idea of, you know, trying to, you know, implement something very tangible, and perhaps set up a prototype playground that could also inform the, the, the master plan, should it, you know, be incorporated into the subsequent one in 2021, or whenever that was. I, I think it's a good idea, what you're suggesting, and I, I would support, you know, cutting that in half and, and, and working toward a, an actual playground that the commission can decide where, where to, to begin that. I think it's a reasonable idea.
Councilor Green?
I, I also think it's, it has great merit. I think there was a lot of passion around this particular plan by Mrs. Wilman, as I recall, and also, excuse me, and she also pointed out that this is another form of public engagement, particularly for families and children. So it would be great to do something tangible now, and I, I like the idea, thank you.
Councilor Appleton?
Very briefly, I concur. About a $20,000 allocation as some seed funding for some, to leverage some fundraising or some grants, or there's lots, there's lots of different opportunities to, to raise additional funds, so I would definitely be in support of that.
Make that change in the, in the draft to come back. Councilor Zelka?
The last thing that, that I'll add is, you know, with all the focus, shall we say, on, on, on playgrounds being, potentially being reallocated to, to other school buildings, I think this is, this is very timely to, to get something concrete out there to show that we absolutely support the children in the community, thank you.
Concrete is dangerous for playgrounds, but I get what you're saying. Okay, so thank you for that. I am, I'm just cognizant of time, there are five minutes to eight, and I was hoping to finish this at eight o'clock, but, and I want some time for public input as well. So I think if indulgence, if we go to 8:15 and try and get through some more of this, these are very helpful discussions, at least I'm finding them, just to, I'm probably going to come, come back here maybe with a couple of options next, next week, maybe not, but I'm finding this quite helpful. So housing review, we've already allocated, so that's underway. And there's really nothing else within the building and planning that's a cost item, just lots of work to do. Is that fair? Okay. Looking for, oh yeah, councilor name?
I, I thought we were, we, the one point, we had a discussion around possibly moving up that zoning bylaw. I, I know we're just looking at 2019, but because it's in front of us, I just thought I'd ask the question through your chair to staff about, maybe you could just explain, I, I mean, I, I, whether there's any benefit to, to moving, I mean, obviously it incurs a cost earlier, but I'm just wondering what that's like in terms of the tasks you have to do and the sequencing, et cetera.
Mr. Anderson, obviously there's a lot of bylaw work that goes into the changes to the housing, so is this, is it, does it make sense to have that more aligned? Or is it, that you said, work, work capacity discussion?
Thank you, your worship, for that nice segue. The comprehensive zoning bylaw update would, I, I think, best be held off until we look at what changes we want to make as a result of the various housing and village plan initiatives that we make. The, this, the, the comprehensive zoning bylaw update is, is a significant piece of work. It's, it's one that the, the bylaw hasn't had a look for quite a while, and it's, it's not something that, A, I think, would take a, a short period of time. It, it may in fact be more than a year for us to get through a process, in my experience, of, of a bylaw review of that nature. So I think just fundamentally, it makes sense to, to get through some of our approaches to housing before we embark on that zoning bylaw update.
Yeah?
All that question, and so the secondary suite review is underway currently, and I'm just wondering, will there be any implication to the zoning bylaw once that is moved forward?
Yes, your worship, there, there would typically be. Most other communities that allow for secondary suites make an amendment to their, to their zones in order to either allow them as a right throughout the community, or, or specify certain zones or areas of the community that they would permit them. And so there would be a, an implementation piece as an outcome of the secondary suite study that would be a, an amendment to our zoning bylaw.
Okay, thank you.
But just to be clear, that's not the comprehensive piece that you're talking about? That's, that can be done as, as part of the housing piece?
Yeah, again, it's, that would be a relatively minor piece. I think with respect to the other housing pieces, it, it's, it needs to be sort of looked in the context of some more significant review and changes to our zoning bylaw.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson, Councilor Green, then Councilor Zelka?
Through you, Chair, to Mr. Anderson. So the housing review is, includes the housing needs study, correct?
Through you, your worship, it's the housing needs report that, that we would undertake, and it's referred to as a housing review in, in the initiative that you have, and that's to also allow for some public consultation around the outcome of the housing needs report.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Zelka?
Thank you so much, Chair. Speaking of risk, this is always an area of risk for Oak Bay. And I was slightly alarmed at, at the presentation given in this area with respect to the discussion around the housing review, and how it was talked about how the, the money was already approved, and, and the secondary suites is, is in process. But what wasn't mentioned was that, what was also decided was that the housing review would complete at the Parks and Rec at the same time as the housing, as a secondary suite study, essentially that they were being done in concert, and that was not made clear at the presentation. So hence, my risk, my alarm, my concern, that, that it sounds like there's a, just, I think back a few pages ago to public engagement relating to risk. I mean, if we can't engage internally and let council know, let staff know, let, let, let the departments know, any potential public engagements that are coming forward before it's announced to the public. Then, for example, at the Advisory Planning Commission meeting a week or so ago, when it was announced that there would be potentially a, a public engagement on secondary suites, people were calling me immediately, but I had never heard a thing about this. So I, I'm pleased to see money going into public engagement, but this is an example of low-hanging fruit, where we need to be a little more all on board, where we actually communicate with each other before we communicate with the public, please. Thank you.
Not a budget discussion, but yes, I, I, it touched on what I was saying before, really, was just that we have to do our jobs well, obviously, as council, and, and the information being out there, it's, it's an important part of it, more than the, the tools, the, the social media and stuff, so. I think it goes really fundamentally to, to us just doing a good job of sharing information.
You're right.
I do want to get this back to the council, the budget, so.
You're absolutely right, but I see this as example of the low-hanging fruit of something that costs relatively small amount, and doesn't, we don't necessarily need a consultant for that to, as we give ourselves a pep talk on how to do this a little bit better. I do also want to say that pending the housing review, the needs report, what I refer to as a housing strategy, since I'm hoping for more than just a needs report, even though we may not get more than the, in these report, depending on what that looks like, the, for the subsequent years around, around, you know, I consider these placeholders, infill housing neighborhoods. I'm, I'm not approving those today, but it's interesting that the placeholders are there, just in case, depending on what the housing needs review looks like. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Patterson?
Thank you, Mayor. At the risk of perhaps being clubbed, one thing I don't, I don't see in here, and yet, it, it comes to mind, and I certainly hear it out in the community all the time, the, our official community plan, the OCP, was based on 2011 data. We're in 2019, by the time we get through this term, that, the OCP is going to need refreshed to, along with all of this, and I don't see that in any of this planning.
I don't know if staff want to address that right now, or if that's just a, just a point, it's a point of, it's just probably just a good point to raise that we have to have it at the back of our minds, that we're going to have to review that document, so. Okay, good. Twelve, yeah, I've got a few more minutes to try and get through this. Sure. Well, engineering and public works, I think, is a verbiage of agreement and simplicity on this stuff. The, anything on the municipal hall heating system? Anything on the painting of the municipal hall? Anything on the carpet replacement in the municipal hall? Councilor Appleton?
Thank you, your worship, not about carpets specifically, but I, I did, I think that we've raised the, the subject. I think we've kind of talked around it a few times, and I, I just wanted to reiterate for, for items like this, how useful it would be, again, we don't have a dedicated facilities person for those facilities, which are not Parks, Rec, and Culture facilities. And I think we've alluded to this and discussed it around this table before, so when it comes to allocating budget to, you know, physical items like this that pertain to municipal buildings and municipal infrastructure, it would be useful to be able to see all of these sort of in a, in a, in a priorities, in a, in a priority way. And I, and I know that engineering and public works is, is working towards this as part of the asset management framework, but I, I just felt like I should bring it up here. It's, it's difficult for me to, not, not that I'm not in support of, of what's presented here, but I would, you know, there, there could potentially be other items of this nature for other municipal facilities that, that might be judged as being more of a higher priority. But, you know, with that said, I don't think that there are very many things that are higher priority than, than municipal hall where our staff work. But I did, it, I'm just reiterating that point, because in subsequent years, I, I certainly would like to see something that helped us look at all of our, all of these types of projects, these sort of infrastructure, not infrastructure-related works, but facilities, projects for municipal buildings.
Okay. Now, I, I think it's safe to say, Mr. Verella, that that, those, these discussions are, are a piece of future. Mr. Haran?
Just through you, Chair, just as a, as a comment, this, the, these projects fit in the, in terms of the, where they are in the documents under Engineering Services, but they're actually the result of the whole team's analysis of the needs across all the facilities. So there are more requirements for other buildings that are coming soon, you know, in future years. But you'll notice in other parts, there's aspects in the police budget where there's police facilities that are being dealt with, and then the fire, for fire facilities. So this one, it does represent the full team's analysis of what the needs are for this year.
Thank you. Mr. Brozick, you're looking kind of sad that you're not getting stuff for your public works, Chair. This is, Councilor Green?
Through you, Chair, just a comment to, to Mr. Haran. Would it be helpful in, in future to, to organize all of the facilities projects coming forward in, in one place? In other words, we have facilities improvements for Parks and Rec budget, this budget, and so on. Is, is it possible to organize in such a way that you would have one budget for facilities management, asset management, that would reflect all of those priorities? And then, you know, it would be easier to, to sort of see them and weigh them against one another in terms of how, importance and so on? Am, am I clear? Sorry.
Through you, Chair, that, that's a really good point, and, and I, I think it's worth noting that we have a, there, there's a longer-term facilities master plan, which is part of the asset management program, and this is not necessarily part of that, actually. This is, even if the municipal hall is not to be replaced for 15 or 20 more years, there's a significant amount of operations and maintenance funding that has to happen to keep the facility running. And that's true for, for most of the facilities in the district. So part of that asset management work, as this budget gets approved and we move forward, is, is answering that question, the very question you're asking. How do we best put this information in front of the council and, and prioritize these kinds of decisions and organize ourselves this way? So this is one step in that direction, and there's more work to be done around answering that better.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I will say, I, I really appreciate these monies coming in to do the work. I, I, my fear is always that we get caught up in trying to optimize these sorts of things, and they're just, you know, sometimes it's just cheaper to do them than it is to try and worry about whether or not it's exactly the, the right year or the right piece. And so I appreciate them coming forward as, as a practical way of making sure that we're not, we're, we're patching the holes as we go. Councilor Green?
This, this is a really, sort of, it, it's a decoration question. Instead of carpeting, have we thought of alternative flooring options that are, that easier to maintain and, and so on? Sorry, I just, when I arrived here seven, well, in 2011, the first thing I thought about was the carpeting and the painting, so I'm really glad to see it on the list, thank you.
Mr. Jones?
Your worship, it, it's likely that it will be carpet, or it'll probably be carpet tiles, which are things that you can replace if there's some problems. And it's largely for here around noise, so if you have carpet versus flooring, it's, it's quite a bit quieter with the carpet.
Thank you very much, and you're right, and, and carpet tiles would be a great option, actually, thank you.
We may want to leave the little patch of carpet right in front of the main desk, because all the dogs during dog licenses really enjoy smelling around that area, so it's...
Your worship, I just want to point out, it does not include your office.
I, I assume that, actually, I just noticed the rounding down here. Okay, and main door replacement questions? This is Support to Watershed Team, any questions? LED streetlight project final phase, oh, Councilor Patterson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and through you two staff, Mr. Haran did speak about reducing consumption and saving money. What's the return on investment, or what's the payback on this project?
Through you, Chair, what we've observed in the first, the first, say, two-thirds of the project that's already been completed is about, the cost of electricity is about a third of what it was before we made the change. So, so it's a significant reduction. So what we're looking to do is, is finish the job, and then we'll have fully realized the aims of the, of the project when it was first conceived.
Councilor Patterson?
Just as a follow-up, I, I suppose I was hoping perhaps for a windfall of, of money that was going to be saved on this project that could then be transferred to something else.
Mr. Haran?
Well, through you, Chair, indeed. So what it means is, in say, 2015, there was a certain amount of money in the operating budget that was to pay for streetlights, and that is, so all the changes have, have been incorporated. And as we finish this, we'll be able to make adjustments in future. So over a five-year period, the, the, the amount of money that was required to, to pay for those electric- So over a five-year period, the amount of money that was required to pay for those electricity for streetlights is now going to be reduced by two-thirds.
Thank you for that. We can almost go back to pre-1946, where they turned off the lights at 1:00 in the morning. We could do that, yeah, it's just an option. There used to be a light switch in the police station that they would turn them back on when they had to send the police out to see things. The, I do actually have a question on this to staff, and that is just, we have, we set aside money, we paid ourselves our carbon tax funds, and the original criteria, it's more loose now, but I still believe in the original criteria, which is that where there are energy-saving projects, where there isn't a clear ROI to justify it, that you can subsidize those projects using those carbon tax dollars. In the first phase of this, we had a BC Hydro grant to help cover some of those costs for that same reason, and we're now in phase three of that project. This is probably more for Ms. Carter than for Mr. Haran. Is, would this be reasonable to fund a portion of this from that approximately quarter of a million dollars we have sitting in that fund, or $200,000 we have sitting in that fund that we paid ourselves? Because this seems to be the kind of project that would have been, that is, that formed part of that framework.
Yes, Your Worship, we could. Currently, what's happening with that particular project is we had some carryforward funds, so we're using about 50% of carryforward funds and the balance out of taxes, so if council chose instead of taxes to fund it from the other carbon reserve, we could do that.
Maybe, I wouldn't maybe suggest all of that, I think it's reasonable to do that, but I believe, what was the percentage that BC Hydro paid out of that? Does anybody remember? I believe it was a third or half of the original cost?
Through you, Chair, I've just been told, I couldn't, I can't quite remember, but we think it's 46%.
All right, so perhaps we could look at what that would look like, if we took 46%, paid that out of the reserve and the balance out of taxes, that would keep that consistent with our previous pieces, and would help reduce some of the tax burden this year. Not for today's meeting, but when we come back. If council, I'm getting some general nods, that'd be okay, okay? Work order management, infrastructure?
Sorry, Chair, just backing up a half second, the discussion around the carbon tax funds, I mean, we are going to have, I presume, that mayor's task force around the environment, so we don't want to use up all of that reserve funds, maybe making it available to that, possibly to that task force.
And that's a very valid point. It's about, I believe, about $200,000 or $240,000, something like that, in that fund right now, if I recall? Ms. Carter, getting a general nod?
Yes, that's a rough estimate. If you want the exact number, I could provide that for you.
That's fine, but so it would be approximately a quarter-ish of that fund into that.
That's great.
Quarter pieces for the straightforward, we're into the transportation and infrastructure, pavement, and storm sewer rehabilitation. Is there anybody who has any second, third, fourth thoughts on any of this? Counsel Patterson?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I think this is good, because we're definitely trying to pick up some of the ground that has been lost in previous years on this, but when do we have the discussion on the 3.1 million shortfall?
It's just 3.1 million? Well, I have one ask of this, actually, and that is, I think the approach taken here of incrementally increasing these amounts under the way we have it, the intention of particularly the Infrastructure Rivers Reserve Saving Program, we're getting to that $5, $5.5 million, just a chunk of cash available at the end of five years, that we can start leveraging grants, starting to leverage borrowing, all those pieces. Obviously, we're not ready for doing that this year, but we're starting that process so that we have the ability to do those really, really intelligent long-term capital pieces. All of that, I really like. I like everything else in here, there's a lot of incremental pieces that'll address the, you know, I've had a feedback already that transportation safety improvements, just more curb cuts, better approach to make, you know, just the basics, again, we talked about the basics, the basic ability for people with walkers to get off of sidewalks, and even in the village, these are really important pieces, and so I think there's a lot of support for all of that. The only piece of this that I think might be a little bit lagging, and I don't, I know we can't get too far in front of it, because we're also going to look at some of these big projects and repaving, is the pavement management. It's a substantial increase from last time, but it's still, you know, we're looking at at the end of five years being just, you know, a million and a half dollars short of what we have to be at to maintain, so, you know, do we, do we this year add, 826, just make that around a million, add another three-quarters of a percent to that pavement piece to just bring that up a little bit? That's the only thing that, in my mind, flagged is a possible increase on that front, because there's a huge cost here of some of these pavements, that when we let them get past the point of no return, the costs escalate dramatically, and I don't know if that small, that extra $170,000 would make a significant difference in terms of curbing that, but my impression is, maybe I'll turn to Mr. Brozek to get it, or Mr. Haran to get a sense of that's, that's not fair. You guys have already made your presentation on what's there. It's really at this table. That's the only add that I can see that I would make a change to, is perhaps looking at that number coming up a little bit. Counsel Green?
In that regard, then, perhaps staff would be agreeable to providing us with that information at the next meeting on the 17th? Would that be, would that be possible, or?
I don't think there's any additional information. I think this is really a philosophical discussion at this table now, is that number adequate for perspective in that timeframe for increases? Or would we like to see that have a slightly, you know, faster response timeframe?
Okay, and it's actually a two-part question. I think that's the first part. The second part is, how would that impact other budgets? Even though it's, you know, just under $200,000. Is, you know, would that have an impact? So maybe that's the answer I would be looking for, thanks.
It doesn't have any impact unless we change other parts of the budget to reduce other areas to compensate for it. So the question then would be, I'm just throwing it out there, maybe we don't have to answer that question, and we'll bring it back to next meeting, but that's the only thing I flagged on here as being, I'm really, I've got to say to staff how thrilled I am at this approach of just trying to be, take a pragmatic, you know, increasing amount each year, but really with the understanding that even without all the information, we're at least putting some money aside on this front. And hopefully, with the long-term financial plan, we'll find some ways of really maximizing the grant and other mechanisms to drive down our total costs, because the only other thing I might add, and Ms. Carter, I don't know if you have an answer to this, in the federal budget, there's also a one-time increase to the gas tax, that they're doubling it this year, so that the 2.2 billion or billion that they give their ye election years are adding an extra $2.2 billion. And I guess, do we have a discussion here about where do we apply that money, should that money come through? Obviously, subject to budget being approved at the federal level.
And that will be next year.
This year, 2019 budget?
Yeah, at this time, we don't have any additional information, other than what you've already stated.
I guess it might just be, if we could maybe flag that as just a question for next time, if there's a, I would like to, honestly, one of the things I'd like to see is to the shift over the years coming is to have more and more of these policies, that when we get money, if they're sort of uncertain, if we get grants, that we allocate those, you know, ahead of time, so we're not kind of in the flow of the moment. And that may just go into infrastructure, that's the simplest, is just throw it into the infrastructure reserve, but that's a huge amount of money, it's potentially $600,000 or so, or $700,000, right? So it's, it would have an impact on what we're allocating here. Ms. Carter?
So there has been discussion across a number of municipalities with the finance directors around the gas tax funds, and this was before my time at Oak Bay, but I understand that this occurred once before, at least once before, however, there were repercussions down the road, so there's a little bit of caution there as well.
That's fair enough. Mr. Jones?
Your Worship, yeah, just to be clear, the parameters around that funding are still not clear, so it's not funding that you could count on today, it doesn't mean we're getting double our money or anything like that, yet we're all waiting optimistically, but we'll have to wait and see.
No, and that's totally fair, and I'd say if I don't want it part of this budget, but I just, it'd be worthwhile, since we're having these sort of thoughts about where we're spending our money, to maybe make some, you know, discussions here about where we might allocate that, should it come in. Counsel Selka?
Thank you so much, Chair. I presume if we approve this amount, and then when, say, a windfall comes in of 600,000 or 300,000, or whatever it ends up being, we could then, at that point, make some decisions at that time. Potentially looking ahead, you know, whether it's the mayor's task force on the environment with types of things we could do in a short term, or whether it's moving forward on the uplands sewage separation, and in some expedited sort of way, or potentially throwing in additional money at the pavement management. I mean, there would be lots of asks for that money, should it show up. And, you know, six months from now, I'll know more than I know now, so I wouldn't want to...
Okay, that's fair. Maybe we'll just leave that alone.
The only thing I'd add to that, if we didn't pay, if we were not paying the provincial health tax of $360,000 additional this year, I would be much more open to your suggestion, but because of that, I'm fine with this number the way it is.
That's good feedback. Counsel Patterson?
Just to add to your comments, Mayor, you know, I really think that we have to be cautious about using any monies that come back, or any tax increases, to fund reserves until we do establish true policies around the reserves, which include how much should be in them. I don't have a problem, certainly with the infrastructure, because the fund is extremely low in comparison to what I have calculated needs to be in the fund, so that is one fund that I don't have a problem with, but still, you know, allocating a portion of our taxes to put it into reserve funds, we should know what the upper limit of that fund will be, how much should be in the fund, and what it'll be used for.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Patterson. I do want to get to, welcome the public to come forward and speak to us, if there's anybody who wishes to come forward. Is there any other comments at this point on the, anything else remaining on here in the fire? Counsel Appleton?
No.
Yeah. Anything else? Seeing none, okay. So we would welcome, if anybody wants to come forward and just speak to us, if you can just come forward here, we just need, need your name and municipality of residence, and then you're welcome to speak to us on something related to the budget, we hope.
Graham Ross.
Just, if you could sit down and turn on the microphone.
Well, I don't want this to come across as a lecture from the oldest guy in the room, but I'm obsessed, as a few others are, with public consultation. Now, most, if not all of you, have been elected based on that platform, and I've been dealing with governments for at least 50 years, federal, provincial, municipal, all the time, and I've come to the conclusion, there are two kinds of public servants. There are the public servants who really want to make your project happen, and there are public servants who will find every reason why it shouldn't happen. So to me, this is a cultural issue, it's an attitude issue, and I would, encouraging everyone, staff, council, whatever, to try to bring the public in, don't keep them out. Now, one example I'm going to bring forward today, I went into the Oak Bay News, and I saw the ad for the meeting on Wednesday, next Wednesday. It was this big, with the smallest font I've ever seen, I had to use two magnifying glasses to read it. Now, the only conclusion I can come to is, somebody didn't really want me to read that ad. That's the point I'm making, is if this staff, council, want me to read ads, surely we have enough money to buy a slightly bigger one. That's my point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. And I think we can take that to heart, just the little things that matter, or the big things, if we're doing it well, I guess. Anybody else wish to come forward?
Jake Richardson, Oak Bay, I just have a couple of questions. First, how are the deferred taxes illustrated in your budgeting? And what is the amount of those? What is the amount of your accumulated deferred taxes? And how do they get into the...
Just direct your question through me.
Sorry, sorry. I'm looking at the numbers lady. Through you, Mayor. I want to know where, how much of an account receivable does the municipality have for deferred taxes? And how does that come into our accounts, and can that number be leveraged? Or is it just penny-ante, and it doesn't matter?
It's a significant number, but it doesn't matter. It's a $0 on the account basis. We get paid the taxes by the province, it's a provincial-run program, so we, yeah, we get 100% of the taxes, the deferral is managed by the province, and they collect at the time of sale.
Okay, okay. Another small one, this is about nickels and dimes. We don't need all this colored ink. Sorry, you know, there's four people here, we've got reams and reams and reams of paper, it's a waste. Do we, and this is directed to the police chief, do we still have an interceptor car?
Through me?
Through, sorry. Do I have to do that every time?
The police chief is not here, the police budget was already...
Yeah, I know.
So what was the question?
So the question is, does the police department have an interceptor car?
I'm not sure.
I believe they're called an interceptor, they're the high-speed ones.
No, the, yeah, no, there's not.
No, no, okay, all right.
Well, they're all, they're all capable, they're all police-certified vehicles.
Oh, yes, no.
But they're not, they're not a high-speed interceptor of any sort, they're...
I know.
If you're interested, actually, the movement has been in recent years away from sedans and into SUVs, it can be small, but SUVs, and that's largely for ergonomic reasons with the modern kit that police carry, they don't fit well, get in and out of low-slung sedans very well, so that's about the only real shift that you've seen, but they're typically just police-certified SUVs, Ford Explorer.
And my last thing is questioned through you, is directed to planning. I'm very concerned that we're not looking to have a housing strategy for another three years, it appears, approximately, and yet we're spending all this money on consultants to get there, when really what we should be doing now is, starting with the tree bylaw, so that we don't have clear-cut lots, followed by DCCs, so that we get imposts from developers of any nature, and get some money coming in, instead of it all going out.
Thank you. I can actually probably address some of that, and maybe if staff want to add in. So the tree bylaw and the DCCs are coming this year, tree bylaw first, I think, very short order. The, I think this is a always a touchy thing we have here, so we don't, we're not using the word "housing plan," because that's, in the planning world, refers to, generally refers to an affordable housing plan. But what we're targeting at the end of 2019, so by the end of this year, we're co-terminating our General Housing Needs Report and the Secondary Suites Report, which will be split really into two, one is existing suites, and one is future suites and policies, where that's really going to be our housing plan process, because then we're looking at the housing needs, and then how do we address those housing needs? So at the end of this year, that's the next phase, then, is really developing the bylaws to what kind of housing we want. So we don't use, we're not using the term "housing plan," but that is the plan from this body, is that at the end of this year, we'll, for all intents and purposes, have that framework, and then we'll be passing the bylaws and doing the consultation on the nuances of what that looks like. So I hope that answers the question.
So by the end of this year, not by three years, is what you're telling me?
Yeah, so what we're hoping at the end of three years is that we're actually going to have all of our bylaws and everything in place, so that all that regulatory framework is in place.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that's the goal. We're committed to it. Counsel Green?
On that point, just for clarification, there will be public consultation as part of that process, as I understand it, as well.
I imagine a lot, yes. Ms. Verella?
And just a reminder that the projects that the planning department is delivering over council's term have resulted from the strategic planning process. Those are council-endorsed, the direction has come from the table. Staff's job now is to deliver, but you've given them their mandate. Staff's job now is to deliver, but you've given them their mandate.
And, well, this is the final part of that mandate, is giving them money to do it as well, so, yes. Anything else? Anybody else wish to come forward to speak? And Steve, you may have to come forward at some point, so we have 100% participation from the audience.
Bob Wallace, Oak Bay.
Welcome, Mr. Wallace.
Mr. Mayor, there's nothing in here about the dump. And wondered if that was a consideration. It's nice to see BMWs and Cadillacs and Lexuses up there dumping things off. But it seems to be getting a little shoddy and it seems to be changing. I wonder if any consideration is charging us, say, a hundred dollars a year instead of making it free and using those funds to keep the dump in a much better repair and much, uh, cleaner operation, um, and probably, uh, supervision. That's one thing I'd say. I'd say that, uh, the, in the one-year line items about training, I noticed it also includes council, not just staff. And I think the council probably, it could be 60, 40, maybe one way or the other, because these are people who are familiar, more familiar probably with the laws than many counselors. The other thing is basically, I think that this, um, cleansing of the air that is happening between council and staff is going well. I hear more interreaction than I've heard before. I've heard more the idea that you set policy, the advised policy, you look at it and it goes back and forth. And I congratulate staff and council on moving this into a much more, um, cooperative type of relationship.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Kind words always welcome. Uh, and I don't have an answer, obviously, on the, uh, on the idea of, of a fee. But you're right, the public works yard is, is in need of some work. And I, you waited till Mr. Brozek left, who is the director of public works. He would, he would have heartened his soul, I'm sure, to have, to have been here for that. Uh, is there anybody else who wants to come forward? You sure? 100%, okay. Bring it back to this table then, we're, we're largely done the review of these pieces. Uh, is there anything else we wanted to give direction to staff before we come back next week? Mr. Jones?
Your worship, I, I guess I just wanna make sure that we've kind of captured a couple of things that you wanted a little bit more information on. So, uh, what I have in my notes is you want a little bit more information on that Wi-Fi upgrade at Parks and Rec. Uh, we are going to reduce the playground master plan to 20,000, but actually make that, uh, a fund to actually, uh, get work done and hopefully match some other funds that might get raised. Um, the, we are going to look at the LED streetlight, uh, project and see if we can, uh, finance half of that from, uh, the, I can't remember what you even call it, the environment reserve or something. Carbon tax, that's right.
Forty, forty-six percent.
Forty, forty-six percent, are you sure? And, uh, the final one, and this is the one I'm not sure on because there was, uh, wasn't, uh, the, as clear. But we, we will bring back what it might look like if we move the pavement management plan from eight twenty-six to a million, just to give you that number, so you knew what, uh, that were.
Yeah, let's say there's a separate, don't, don't do that, cause I think I heard that that's not a unanimous piece. I, I, I think on these pieces consensus is ideal, but if you can just give us a sense of what that would look like from a financing perspective, that would be helpful.
So we wouldn't include that in the plan, but we just kind of, so tho- those are the ones that I had. I don't know if I am missing ones that, uh, others had. I know you wanted to talk about, uh, the 30,000 for public engagement, but I, my sense was that people were okay with that number, but that you were looking at, uh, some further follow-up, which, to be honest, we don't have yet, about how that money will be spent, uh, in accordance with the, the, the task force recommendations.
Yeah, and I, I think we're trying to, huh, first of all, I, I really appreciate this approach because we, we should have everything here and then we have to take it away. But most of these things are actually necessary, most are necessary projects, if not all. And so it's, it's good for us to kinda, it's much more painful to pull out when you do it as opposed to adding on, so. That's, this is good. Councilor Green?
Yes, through you. I, I, I just wanna thank staff. This has been one of the more meaningful budget meetings I've attended in, in my years of, of public life. And I, I really appreciate the material, how it's been presented and explained, and I thank you.
Councilor Zelka?
Thank you, uh, Chair. Just wanted to confirm my understanding, uh, I probably should have asked this at the very, very beginning. The report, uh, that suggested a proposed overall tax increase of 8.4%. Was that assuming, um, that there were no changes to all the items in this list for the year 2019?
Mr. Jones? Sorry, your worship, that, that, that included, everything here is included. So things if you've reduced.
Yes.
It's coming, and if you were to add in, it would go up.
So again, my compliments, I much appreciate this approach. It is way more easier to understand. And, uh, my only confusion is that, oh my God, I was now way too used to a, a complicated way of doing it. So thank you for simplifying it for me. Thank you.
Councilor Appleton?
Thank you, worship. Uh, sorry, I'm, I feel like I'm drilling back into details again, but did, in terms of Mr. Jones's request, did, did we land on, with regards to the Microsoft 365? Did we land on any other potential options that we might be able to explore or at least do a, a needs analysis as, as you referred to? Again, this is venturing into technical territory.
No, no, it's a good question, actually, because we talked about it a lot, but we never really kind of pulled it back into a, into a, an action item.
So your worship, I, I think you're, you're absolutely right. I think that I do have a little star beside that. So I think that's something that we need to provide you some more information on and, uh, we can do that next week and you can, uh, make some decisions.
Okay. I mean, one of the options we have as a council is to ask, you know, not include that this year and direct staff to come, go out and to the market and do a, a full needs analysis and, and costs and, and are there, are there maximum ways of maximizing the value? That's a big ticket item. Our total IT budget is in the neighborhood of 180,000, so adding $60,000 to it is a pretty substantial, substantial portion. So maybe it's a bit more than that, actually, but it's, yeah. Mr. Appleton? Councilor Appleton?
Well, thank you, worship. And, and, and that alludes to, uh, a thought that I had earlier, and I appreciate you raising it because if, if this is indeed going to be, uh, you know, software licensing and these types of costs are going to be continually, uh, applied and continually potentially growing component of the budget, um, if we're going to be charged licensing, and I know that even running a small business, software licensing is, uh, is a pretty significant cost. So if, if, if we need to consider this in a holistic way to factor it into subsequent years' budgets, this is, this may not be the only piece like this that we have to consider coming up. So a needs assessment may be very valuable at this stage in the game.
So worship, we, we hear you loud and clear, so we'll, we'll bring back some further information next week.
Okay, thank you very much, staff. Uh, does staff have anything else to add or questions for us at this point before we wrap up? Ms. Vella?
Uh, your worship, there was another report, um, but given the timeline tonight, we could refer that to the April 17th, cause that's really about getting some clarification on how we move forward. Uh, and it, there's a proposed framework. You can take a, a week and consider the content of the report, uh, see if we've missed anything. And then the next step after that would be to bring back a more enhanced framework for you to consider. But this is really to say, have, have we got the, are we in the ballpark for what you're hoping for moving forward?
Okay, so I just wanna make sure, cause we have an agenda, then I'm just gonna make sure we follow our process here. So we have a draft 2019 to 23 financial plan. There was no action item directly attached to it, but should we receive this at this point? Or just, is that just moving through? I wanna make sure we go through a, a process that, that ticks off the three agenda pieces. Ms. Hopkins, is there a?
Your, your worship, I think what, uh, we should do is that staff be directed to, um, uh, prepare a report for April 17th in response, and I'll list, I can't remember whether they even are in my own mind, on those four matters. And, uh, that we'll, uh, come back to with what, uh, numbers will look like then. And then, um, the other thing that will happen at that meeting will be, uh, your grants as well.
But I also, okay, so we can, we can have that motion, I'm comfortable with that. So if someone would move that, uh, redirect staff to come back with, with, with updated information based on the conversations here.
So moved?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, any other discussion? All is in favor, opposed, not opposed, thank you. The other piece is this long-term financial planning piece is a piece I wanna make sure makes it onto the next, we have a motion to refer that to the next meeting. So can I have a motion to refer item number three to the next meeting?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All is in favor, opposed, not opposed. So that'll come back to us formally next time. Uh, anything else procedurally that I'm, I'm missing out here? Yes, we will get to the adjournment, okay. Just wanna make sure, moved and seconded, uh, any, just, no, no discussion, adjournment, all is in favor, opposed, not opposed. Thanks, everybody.